Well, so let's get started. Yeah, I'm pulling up the. Pulling up the stuff, yeah, we have seats down by me and I promise I don't bite anything but this. So we'll call this to order. We have all council members here except for council member Bloom, am I right? One, two, three, five. Yeah, okay.
Yeah, that's right.
Yes. Go around the room, I forget to count myself. All right, and this is the committee, the whole meeting. We have a lot of staff here as well. Thank you all for being here. Wednesday, March twentieth. The first discussion topic is a discussion about motor vehicle parking violations being reclassified, and this is council member Green and Whitelock who wants to take the lead.
I'll take that. What, Warren, can you put that document up, please?
Welcome, man.
So let me give you a quick background.
I gotta share my screen. Back in November, I had a discussion with somebody sitting on that far wall. We won't throw him under the bus. And we were talking about parking in the city and there was a suggestion made that we remove the criminal aspect of parking in West Jordan City because then it could be enforced by CSOs or other people. And it doesn't require the police, a sworn officer who normally has the parking. Parking is normally, you know, about a hundred and seventeenth on a list of sixty-five priorities on any given ship. And so the idea, the idea that started this was to look at the decriminalization of parking so we could better enforce it by using a civil process instead of using the criminal process. In the research and everything of this ordinance, it turns out that the last time this ordinance was updated was two thousand, well, there were two sections that were, one was section was up, one minor section was updated in two thousand sixteen and one was updated in two thousand and twenty, just before the change in form of government. But most of the ordinance hadn't been changed or hadn't been updated since two thousand and one. And so, and the state code had gone through its Utah Code Title forty-one dash six A went through, the parking went through a substantial rewrite in two thousand and sixteen. And, and so, and it's actually even got a provision in it that we can't have anything, the conflicts with state law in it, and it appeared that there were a couple of things that were actually conflicting with state law about the way we park. So Kayleen and I sat down, we, we, we reorganized this, cleaned it up. Got rid of about six thousand words, by the way. And, and so what I want to do is just scroll through this so you can see the changes that we're proposing that we adopt. With Warren, will you scroll down a little bit farther?
It's actually me.
Oh, was it you? Okay, Alan. What we did was we put, moved all the definitions into a table like consistent with our current ordinance. And then this, we'll come back to this one that's highlighted in green on the snow event. Alan, if you'll scroll down farther, please. Well, the, the first thing that we need to, if you guys, as we talk about this, is that what we've had was, I don't know how you can say you can park down the street this way in a prohibited parking section. It was the goofiest thing in the world. So when, this is the way you're supposed to park in the, in, from the, the prohibited section up to an area, it says this is where you're supposed to park. State law says that it's supposed to be within twelve inches of the right of the curb. Our current ordinance says eighteen. So the first thing that we would ask is, are you guys okay adopting the state standard and going to twelve inches instead of eighteen?
That kind of cleanup is fine. I think the bulk of the discussion is.
Yeah, I, I just wanted to make sure that, that you were okay with that. If you'll scroll down a little bit and then we'll go get, you'll notice that on, on your draft, there were three circles, A, B, and C. Those are absolutely almost the way the state code is drafted, just so you know that. And that's why that was highlighted, is state code is drafted that way. Then it says, except when necessary to do this, you can't do these things, except to do this, can't do these things. So that was what A, B, and C is. And that's more closely aligned with forty-one dash six A.
If it is in the state code, do we need it in the city code too?
If we want, I think we have to, we could adopt forty-one, six A and just say we're adopting forty-one, six A. But if anybody wanted to know what was illegal to park in West Jordan, we would have to go to forty-one, six A to see what was illegal.
We do that in code all the time, but yeah.
I don't think anybody's ever measured the six inch difference though on parking.
I don't think they have either, but. And so I'm gonna scroll down a little further.
San Francisco, but not in West Jordan.
This was, this, this were a couple, so this, this was one of the first things that we wanted to have a discussion. There are seven things here that as we were doing research in other cities that don't have bad parking on these, and the question is, do you want these in the West Jordan code? I think number sixteen probably pretty common sense, you can't park on Mountain View Court or, or Bangator Highway.
Or Redwoods.
Uh, Redwood's not a controlled access highway. Only Mountain View and Bangator control.
I guess you wouldn't want to park in Redwood.
You, you still couldn't, because you'd be parking away.
Yep. Um, do you want any school bus parking zone?
I, I still, I think we're off of the main point, though, here's criminal versus civil, not.
As, as this came up, there was, as we're talking about policies, this came up. Are these things, things that you want to see in the parking ordinance or not? We can move on and say, yeah, we, we want these in.
If they're, if they're in the code now, I, I don't know.
These are not in the city code. These are a couple that other cities had adopted and decided that it was good for their city and we're proposing them. And that's why we wanted to have a quick discussion on these five or these six or seven is, do you want to, do you want to, um, do you want to limit on-street parking for more than seventy-two consecutive hours? I think the other ones are fairly common sense, right? School bus parking zone, controlled highway.
How easily marked are school bus parking zones right now?
Uh, I think they're all marked at the school, or at the school.
At the school.
Students. This is school, these are at schools.
Okay, well, that, I would put school there because that seems like, I would have read that as where school buses stop to pick up kids.
That was my thoughts.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay, we can.
I'm a big fan of nineteen. I like that one.
I don't like that one either.
What's that?
I don't like nineteen either, the seventy-two hour.
You like it.
Oh, I don't, I don't like it because it's hard to prove and it's hard to enforce. How do you know that that car didn't get up, go to the grocery store in the middle of the night and come back?
You mark the tire with chalk. Well, then what if someone just rolls back a little bit, then? I mean, it's just.
Also, but I think of it more like you have, you come home from college, you park on the street in front of your house and is there for the weekend and doesn't need to move their car. Why should they get a ticket? If it's a legally parked car, why does it matter if it's there for seventy-one hours or seventy-three hours?
Well, the fact of the matter is, they're not gonna get a ticket unless somebody complains.
And just, just as a point of reference, Salt Lake City, as I understand, had a seventy-two hour requirement that they were enforcing through the use of chalk and they ran into constitutional challenges with that, so.
And this wasn't the city, this was somebody else.
Yeah, enforcement may be an issue with that.
I have gotten a ticket in Salt Lake City where I parked in one spot and then I moved it to another spot on the same street. They said we can't do it a certain distance in the same location.
Yeah.
I care to elaborate.
Yeah, so what's the consensus on this? Do you want number nineteen or not?
I, I don't like.
I would be in favor of it, but I'm not emotionally attached to it.
Tell me why.
Because I have neighbors who park on the street always. This would be a way to get them off the street.
Would it, no, or would it just get them to move their car once every three days?
Yeah, maybe it wouldn't even work at all.
Yeah, because they'd still park up the street.
Yeah. That one we do use in the city when cars have been there like for a week or a month and haven't moved and you can see vehicles going around and then the neighbors complain, that gives us some enforcement.
We don't have that now.
I think we do.
We have that in our code.
Well, we tell people we do.
On the state code.
What do we, we have to. Use the state, okay, so state code. So I guess it doesn't matter if it's in there or not, it's in the state code.
How long is the state code? Do you know?
I think, I think controlled access highways, school bus parking, I think actually most of those, not all, are, are state code to go this way.
Well, but the, so the question is then if they're state code. And, and a lot of our things are state code. If we enforce the state code, it becomes a criminal violation and it has to go to the judge. If we put this in our code and we make it non-criminal, then it can be handled another way, and that's why we've listed these out in our code.
We've got a provision, I think in, in our title sixteen right now that allows the city to issue a citation for any violation of state law. I don't know that it's ever been done. It's in there. I, I, but I think that is part of the, the larger conversation.
That's why, that's why we're here tonight.
Sure.
Is, is to, is to talk about the decriminalization of the parking. And, and, and do we want, so I, I, I'm okay not having nineteen in.
Well, so maybe as council chair Jacob said, maybe we should go around and see if we want to do civil. Because if we're doing civil, then this matters. If, if we're doing criminal, then it's.
Yeah, it kind of goes to the correction issue, but I do want to ask probably a legal question here is, if you're in violation of state code and it's a criminal matter, if you're in violation of state code anyway, and we make it civil, aren't you still in state code criminal violation and it just depends on which officer writes the ticket with weight? Can, can a, can a police officer or a state trooper still write a ticket for a car that's in violation of state code, even if it's on a city street? And if so, that's a criminal violation anyway, even though it's in West Jordan and we say we're doing it civilly, it's still a criminal violation. Depending on how you write the ticket.
It's gonna be both, yeah, the answer is it can be both.
Right, so it's just depends on how any given enforcement agent chooses to write the ticket.
As long as we do authorize a civil.
Right.
So I guess, so yeah, we can back up. How many would be in favor of eliminating or changing that, that the criminal nature of the parking ticket to a non, to a civil fine or civil assessment, whatever, civil penalty, so that it's not just police that can enforce.
That's, that's the question, and just to, to kind of rephrase what you're saying. It's, it can always, we're not gonna be able to take away the criminal element of it.
No, when police.
State code, or if a policeman cites it, it can still be a criminal violation. We're adding a layer of enforcement to it, saying, hey, we want to broaden the number of people who can go enforce this because our police are too busy doing other things.
Exactly what we're talking.
So, so we're gonna hire three or four meter maids or whatever you want to call them. That's probably a disparaging term, I shouldn't use it, it's not PC. Um, but we're gonna hire three or four parking enforcement agents or just use our uh, community service officers or somebody, code enforcement, whatever, to go and we're gonna authorize this group of people to go and also write parking tickets, but in a civil fashion. So we're, we're not taking away the criminal.
That's correct.
Adding a layer.
Yes.
So I think it's good to, I, I didn't really kind of process that until we just had that.
Yeah, so what we're talking about is police could, that the, the uniformed sworn police officer could enforce it either way. Um, but it allows us to have, like Salt Lake City does, a traffic enforcement bureau that is totally civil and they go around, that's who cites everybody that.
Yeah.
Doesn't.
Yeah, so that's exactly right. So I'd be curious as to what that looks like. What would, let's just say I get a civil parking ticket in West Jordan, what do I do with it? Where do I go? Who do I say, it's not the judge, right? It's not criminal, so where do I go? What does that look like?
We did not put anything in the ordinance because we want the mayor to be able to decide that it could be, it could be the ALJ, it could be a traffic referee, it could be anything.
Yeah, I gotta, I gotta.
Send him to the mayor's office.
I got a parking ticket in Salt Lake once, where a park, there was a sign that said parking for law enforcement vehicles only, but there was no space limits, and I thought I was far enough over from that sign. Apparently the parking enforcement person didn't, so I got a ticket. This is probably fifteen, twenty years ago. And I went to, um, and it gave an address where to go and it felt like the DMV. It was a room with a bunch of waiting chairs and windows, you know? And there were people that would, you know, they'd call your number, you'd take a number when you go in, number seventy-one. I went up and, um, they pull up my case, they look on the computer, there's photos, you know, that the officer took, they're signed to my case number. And they look at it and they go, oh, yeah, I can see kind of where your point is, whatever. We'll cut your fine in half instead of twenty dollars, it'll be ten dollars. And I said, well, I don't think it should be anything. If you're willing to cut it in half, why don't you just cut it all the way down? Because, you know, and I and I was, it was the judgment of one person sitting in a chair. I don't feel like, I didn't get a hearing. I, I maybe could have requested one, I don't know. That's what I'm asking, is like, what does that process looks like? Is whether I'm in favor of it or not, it's gonna tend to depend on what that process looks like, right? If I'm just gonna go deal with our customer service agent downstairs at the window and they have all the authority in the world to either waive it or not waive it or whatever, then I have a problem with that. Because what training do they have in the law? Or, you know what I mean, so?
And I, I have a question, it's just really just because I'm new and learning all this stuff. By doing this, this is all stuff that we would then say, and then the mayor would have to really decide how to staff it.
How to, how to execute.
So we're saying you have to do this, and then the mayor will.
We're saying you.
And I'm not, I'm not, I guess right now, I'm just trying to figure out.
We're saying you can do this.
It gives them another avenue.
It gives, it gives them an avenue, it gives us an avenue, it gives us an avenue to say, hey, we're gonna pay for, for example, during the winter. We could hire a couple of extra part-time community service officers that work from ten o'clock at night until one or two o'clock in the morning that patrols the streets and they cite the, they cite the, the, uh, the vehicle and, and, and so that we can try to get streets better clean for Brian's crew. And that would be the idea is to be able to have a more, because right now, the only people that can cite are the police and.
And sometimes when there's a snow event, they're extra busy.
Yeah, no, I, I get that. I would very much, because the police need to be getting those people in the, the right lanes, that are left lanes that aren't going, you know, the right speed. That's, that's what we're really trying to free up.
That's right.
Yes.
But I want to create a snow parking place. Yeah, it's, I'm just, I'm just trying to figure out, so.
You go out on cross country.
If we came up with this, the mayor says, okay, to do this, I'm gonna need this. Then they would come back to us and say, we're gonna need this much money approved for the budget.
Exactly.
So that we could do this, and it, so we're just creating this kind of little circle thing of, of, and then we have to decide whether or not we can approve that budget, which would look really weird if we, the code, and then said, well, what you came up with is not, not within budget, so. Come back to a sign, again, again, I'm just trying to, this is nothing antagonistic in any way, I'm just trying to learn.
And that would be, but that would be the ability here is that we could then fund it with part-time employees. Uh, sworn officers are expensive, right?
Yeah, no, I get.
And, and so we can, we can do this a different way and it gives us, because, right, because, you know, we hear a lot of complaint about parking in the city, right? We hear that, that's, I, I know the mayor hears about complaints, I bet the chief hears about complaints, we all hear about parking complaints. And we, we only, and, and we only have, we only have a hundred and twenty-five people in the entire city that can, that are busy, that could ever even cite somebody for.
Right, yeah, I get that, but, um, and now, I hadn't thought about it much, but I am a little bit concerned with what Jared Jacob brought up, and that is, who's, who's going to now be the gatekeeper? Um, you know, obviously putting everything on the judge becomes a lot of just busy work there, but do we now need to have someone of that sort of authority to be able to make these decisions, so?
No, because most cities have, we already have. If, if the mayor wants to say we're gonna use the ALJ process, the mayor can instead, you just say, I'm gonna use the ALJs. If the mayor wants to have a traffic referee that he hires or retired at term in part-time, he can, he can do that and come to us. I think, I think we'll let the mayor decide how to do that. And, you know, we're gonna be the ultimate approval on that because we're gonna have to fund it.
Yeah, I think that, for me, the devil's in the details. Like, I, I don't not like the idea, I kind of, I kind of like the idea. I kind of like putting more boots on the ground for this. But the devil's in the details. How's, how's it gonna be enforced? Not how's it gonna be enforced, because that's what we're talking about, but, but after the ticket gets written, what's the process, what's the?
So, so let me ask the judge, in the last five years, how many parking tickets have you had disputed?
Actually disputed in front of me?
Yeah.
I would probably count them in less than figures I have on. So I can't, I did a little research, at least for the past year. Uh, that the past year, we've had four hundred and ninety-seven tickets filed. Of those four hundred and ninety-sevens, three hundred and eighty-six just paid with seventy-seven percent. Four hundred and nine were dismissed either on motion of the prosecutor or, um, it could have gone six months and we didn't have enough information to facilitate any property because we didn't have it's the violation. But seventy-seven percent just came in.
That's a large, that's a large.
Absolutely. That, that, I think that's a significant number that people just say, okay, you got me parking wrong, let me pay for the buck.
I ask for the police officers who are here in the police department, representatives to speak to this issue. What are your thoughts? How should, how should this move forward in your opinion?
Well, a couple of, a couple of, uh, principles here to, to understand, somebody made the reference to snow parking. And if you don't want to have snow parking police, that's, that's fine. When there are snow parking, uh, problems that present a public safety risk, it is true that the majority of parking complaints fall at the lowest level of the dispatch centers priority list. And so it may well be that a parking complaint doesn't get dispatched until twenty-four or thirty-six hours after it's received. Now, that's not common, but it may happen, and in that period of time, often people have moved or they've moved a little bit, and so, you know, there's a little bit of tension there. However, anytime we get a call from the public works staff, radio notice from the snowplows that a vehicle is obstructing access for a snowplow, we send a sworn police officer, not a community service officer, to deal with that as soon as they can. It jumps up in priority, the reasoning being that if that street doesn't get plowed, then it's not just one person whose inconvenience is everybody who's living on the street and because part of the plowing process is providing emergency access. And if a snowplow can't get through there, it may impede a, a fire apparatus. Now, the reality is that substitute Maxfield's apparatus are, are heavy and, and they can get through snow and they're typically not as wide as the front-end blades of, of. So the first thing is that I want everybody to understand that we have always and will continue to treat obstruction in snow parking as a priority call. Everything else, frankly, parking is at the very bottom of the list. And I can talk to you for hours about why, but I think you understand that. Second principle is that, uh, it is true that some there will be some marginal increase in disposal time or, or time that officers will have patrol if they have no parking responsibilities. But don't, don't pull yourself, it will not be a big chunk and it's because parking is a, a low priority and we are, we are often in the evening hours when people get home from work and say, honey, the Jones' car has not moved all day long. Call the police at seven o'clock at night after dinner. It's the worst time to call us for a little priority call. So there's, there's that to consider. Thirdly, though, there, there are times, there are parking issues that may arise in parks, that may arise in school zones, that may arise in other areas where it would be an advantage, not for the police department so much, but a, an increase in, I think, service level for city residents if there were others who were empowered to issue parking citations. And to do that, they can't issue parking citations under the state code because our legislature has very clearly spoken that misdemeanor traffic citations must be issued by a licensed police officer, law enforcement officer, or special functions officer. But administrative citations, and I, I previously served as the administrative law judge for a city in the north here. Occasionally, people would come in and contest in the administrative context, parking citations. Most of the time, my experience is very much like Judge Coates. People come in and they just pay twenty-five or thirty-five bucks because it's not worth it. So there is, I, I think that as you, as you pursue this issue, pursue it from the perspective of improving services to residents, because that's how I look at it. Don't pursue it from the perspective of we're going to create less antagonism for the police or we're gonna free up police time. Reality is, folks, most of the parking complaints, they are about the college kid who came home. They are about the neighborhood, especially up in the Maples. They are about the, the homes where there are three and four licensed drivers and three and four vehicles and we created very narrow streets and we've allowed not much of a setback for driveways and the garage is full of.
Whatever.
Whatever.
Not cars, storage units.
But, but not cars, right? Those, those are the challenges that, that we face and frankly, the ship has sailed on. Have people move their house back to Old Beach? That would be nice. So, I'm gonna answer any questions, though, council member, that you, that, that aren't covered and want to just.
I appreciate the perspective, thank you.
I don't know if you or the judge would be better to answer this, but are those parking tickets that you, the number you gave us, are most of those during the winter or are those, is that spread out? Is, is there a curve that it goes up when it sells?
Well, I have, uh, somewhere present of all the cases, and I think pretty well across the board.
Okay.
As far as the percentage goes, one interesting thing that did, I realized, that last year, there was only one citation issued for parking in the handicapped parking spot. While that was dismissed by the, by margin of the prosecutor.
Wow.
But, as I, as I go through these, you can see some of them coming in, first, no removal refused, uh, they get resolved, most of them get paid. Actually, the snow removal, they're not as good as semis parking on the street, semis parking on the street, so men and pay them relatively. And that's a fifty dollar. Whereas the other issues are forty.
I heard a news story on last night or the night before about a neighboring city raising parking fines.
Yes.
I thought it was rather interesting and more food for thought.
Some, some have particularly with, so the, the semis parked on the street, we look at those a little bit differently because they often have a particular units that are running all that and it's a noise complaint. We get it to a buck. We will go and have an officer go try and get those moved, so we may not issue a citation. I'd love to see an increase, frankly, for that particular violation because it, again, the, the parking issues that just irritate people. Not teenage drivers, I get it. Parking issues that irritate people, I look at very differently from the parking issues that impact an entire street, an entire cul-de-sac or all the people whose fences back onto the street with someone's parking and running that reefer unit all night long. And so we address those with police time. So there ought to be, in my view, a higher fine for those where we invest with a higher cost response.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That the policy is sure for the council.
But in that real sense of what he, what he had said earlier was, right now with state code, we, and the way things are, only uh, licensed officers can do any kind of citation at all, right?
Correct.
Cool, right, I appreciate it.
Um, the proposal here is to turn it into an administrative civil issue so that we have a way to, and, and, and let the mayor come up with a way, and, and I would think the easiest way is to use the administrative law judge.
Right.
Um, wouldn't you? I, I mean, I think the administrative law judge would be the easiest mechanism because it's already set up.
Certainly an option that we have available.
And, but, but let the mayor come up with. And, but, but let the mayor come up with the option. But it's, as, as Chief said, it's a level of service issue. Because right now, everybody, I mean, if you read social media pages and other places and talk to people. Really what they say is, and you know, when you're, when you're talking about. Uh, you know, I, you know, Judge mentioned we, we had about four hundred and ninety parking tickets last year. Well, uh, do the math. That's thirty parking ticket, that's thirty five, that's forty parking tickets a month. When, when West Jordan residents say you want to enforce parking in the city. What we, and, 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 and we, we do. We enforce it four hundred and ninety something times during the year. But we're not, we're nodding and, and we're enforcing it on. Obstructing and the critical things. We're not doing a regular enforcement that I think's, that, that, that helps create the neighborhood that allows trucks to. But I would venture to guess that if we had a better enforcement mechanism with. Just regular enforcement, consistent enforcement, we would have less issues with the obstruction issues. Um, that would reduce that. Be interesting to track that over time. But I think we would, we would see, we would see. But it, it's, it would be a way, as she said, to increase the service levels. To our residents right now that is not what we're doing.
And I like the idea that, um, one question, and then again, just. Trying to get information. Have you guys looked at, with the other cities you've looked at, how many additional people they needed to bring on? To make this go and what the possible costs were related to that?
I didn't.
Okay.
I know Salt Lake City's got their own traffic enforcement bureau.
So back, they did that in Orem.
I, I'm going to assume that. Depending on, you know, you know, if you were. It, it's probably an incorrect assumption, but generally. Um, you know, if a, if a traffic enforcement, if a traffic enforcement person or a CSO go one ticket. One ticket an hour, they pay for their salary. So it, it doesn't take a whole lot of tickets.
They don't know we want to be the city, though.
I'm not saying that we do, that, that there are any quotas or anything. But it does generate enough revenue that it would cover the cost.
I think that's what I was asking, to see if any research had been done in that.
Then something you alluded to was the level of service. That people perceive that we don't. We don't enforce parking at all in the city because only four hundred and something are being written a year. This would give us an opportunity to help the residents feel like they're being heard. And that, that they're being responded to.
So I'm not, I'm not hearing. This huge amount of we suck at parking enforcement. I, I see it from the loud people. I see it from the vocal people. But I don't see thousands of people calling me or you guys every day saying, our parking enforcement stinks. What unintended consequence I can see, we talked about, there was only five hundred tickets given out. Well, now when we jumped to a thousand, is that going to look good or bad? Oh, well, you guys are out there doing more work, but then again, now we just take it to five hundred more people. You have five hundred more residents that are going to be angry.
Uh, I've never had a thousand people reach out even for a boundary change where they were very angry, went to the media. So I think that's a pretty large number. But I've heard from many residents that have issues with people.
Cause I, I haven't heard.
Many.
I've heard thousands of people clamoring for us to fix parking.
To me, if I get two emails from residents in this city, that's a lot of people.
So two is many.
They don't often reach out. Um. But I do watch social media and they do complain about parking in our city.
I, I do. I, I hear it all. I hear what you're saying. That's not a concern for me just because. Um. Because the, the additional five hundred people that you made mad by writing five hundred more tickets.
Shouldn't have.
Did something wrong. Yeah.
Well, you also made five hundred or a thousand people happy because the parking issues now taken care of.
You're correct. Some calls that I give as chief of police and I don't give, I'll give that many and they usually come from, it doesn't do the mayor. They are for the people who. Have a, a vehicle that's on blocks in the street and it's been there for a long time. Or somebody's been working on it, it's a project vehicle. Or it's the consistent parking of large trucks, diesel trucks and so on. Now, please don't, please don't see the number of citations issued. Um, and, and taking to the justice court as the best metric. Of parking issues because our emphasis with the CSOs is to give warnings. It's a heavy emphasis. We have to keep special colored tags that we hand out for snow parking. And on the seventy two hour parking, we do our very best. To, to mark them at seventy two hours so that someone comes home at the end of the day and they sees. They see that marking and, and you know, they may get irritated because the West Jordan left it, ED left a notice saying. You know, we have a complaint, you've got to move this vehicle, can't park here for seventy two hours. I don't know because we don't measure what the compliance rate with that is, but. But there's a lot of time where we're trying to use persuasive authority rather than enforcement authority. And frankly, I prefer that. I never want to look at parking as. Uh, a means of generating revenue. I never want to look at parking. As, as any sort, I never want to be the police chief who has even a hint of a. To me, quota, I know it has five letters, but it's a four letter word. I don't want to go down that path.
There's a lot of other words that you could use.
You know, Councilmember Green's thought about. An administrative scheme, simply again, to me, it's a way to raise the service level.
And this, and this seems the going remedy administrative as well in our code.
A, a tone is more expensive than a citation.
We try and call, we, we, we do try and call, we do try and find. People before we tell. We don't love to attract situations anywhere that anyone.
Now, I, I love a lot about this. I would just need to, in my head, seem to figure out how many more people we think. And what that is going to cause and how it goes.
So that's not our call, that would be mayor's.
If I'm making a call that's going to force that call.
Come back to the council to gather the budget. It will become a budgetary issue that the council does have to decide.
Cause I know it's going to come back to me, so I, I think it's going to take three years, three and a half years and maybe I won't be here. So it's something I'll have to deal with.
But it's just an additional tool for their toolbox. And for me, the reason I like having it go from criminal to civil. I don't think any parking should be criminal personally. I don't understand the state. Right, well, yeah.
How many times have you parked around?
I'm in front of my house all the time because I, I, I don't care a little more. One other question I have, maybe for Corbin, might be for, I'm not sure which staff. But um, when that call comes in to dispatch. And says, I mean, are we, is, is somebody still getting called a eight four oh four thousand number, an non-emergency dispatch called back? And say. And say, hey, I, I've got somebody parked in front of my house. It's bad or next to the fire hydrant or whatever. Um. How does that call get routed differently? And again, I'm, I'm getting into weeds, I know. But um, and I try not to, but how does that call get routed differently? When that comes in, I guess it, it happens now with code enforcement, right? Or do we just have people? Does it come to the police and then the police decide to send out?
Dispatch could be, could be instructed on who they send the call to.
We have, we have Brock there who deals with those kinds of issues on a regular basis.
Those come in now, right? Do people call a non-emergency police number for code violations?
They do and dispatch will either give them our number or transfer them to our number.
Okay, so we could instruct dispatch, hey, don't, don't tell the police about this. Tell, tell Brock.
Or, or it could be the state facility, go to the police department. Traffic Bureau, may, traffic enforcement.
Brock's cell phone number, please call him.
Put under Brock or the mayor could have them.
Parking is criminal. Criminal means a lot of different things. Tickets are, are fractions. Which cannot be enforced by, you know, can only be enforced by fines. So it's a. It comes through the criminal court, but they're not.
It, it's still, yeah, even as an infraction, right? I mean, it's a criminal violation, but it's a. It's, it's a civil penalty almost, right?
Parking the handicap is a B, isn't it?
Well, I think that that's a misdemeanor.
Yeah, I was going to say a couple of them are still.
Fine by state statute is a hundred and twenty five dollars. I said, we only have one of those in a year.
Right, and we wouldn't, and we wouldn't put that under the civil authority necessarily. That's already a criminal misdemeanor.
We can put anything that we want as civil if we want somebody else to be able to help enforce that. And so that's why, in another current code, our current code has handicapped and it has a couple other things. And that's why. Didn't substantially change most of the violations. We're talking about adding those three or four so that somebody else could.
Yeah.
Deal with it if. Needed be because of the priorities.
If I can mention what, what Councilmember Lamb said. One of the most common complaint I get is people drive too fast in residential areas. The second one is people parking. Those are the two most common.
I'll start calling you for every time somebody's driving with their cell phone and getting in my way, being in the left lane.
I, I think it's wrong, but I don't get called on. So look at that one. So he is. Just, you know, those are.
Corbin, did you have anything to?
The, the chief already alluded to it, uh, kind of similar, I was going to say, but as you're considering the policy, um. Implications of this decision and weighing whether it opens up further to civil penalties or keep it where it is. I would not assume that it's going to be um, like cost neutral, that the revenue from parking tickets will pay for the costs of enforcing. But I think, I think we ought to separate that. It can offset it, but I think you ought to. That's a budgetary discussion, that's a budgetary issue. Um, and I, I don't think you will get enough parking.
Eighty thousand dollars. That wouldn't cover hardly anything.
Yeah, so um, so as you're thinking about the policy issues, don't think, oh, we'll do this because we can add staff and they'll pay for themselves.
It should be a level of service issue.
It is.
Level of service issue.
Is it a toll you want?
You know, I. I asked Jamie. Because in Orem, they would do something like that. And I asked him to look to see what it's take to bring it into our city. Because I want to do something like this, so. Jamie, if you want to tell us what you learned from that experience.
Um, yeah.
So the answers.
I, I think obviously from a staffing perspective. And a problem in, in Orem, there was obviously a, a great need in and around the university campus.
Yeah.
And so we did. We did institute a parking enforcement. So we hired two part-time individuals. They were required to have vehicles, obviously, to, to travel in and around the community. And obviously we also had software because they were writing, generating a good number of citations and that required some. Upgrades to software. One of the things that we found unfortunately, and, and Orem had a parking permit program. Really that the uh individuals that ended up being, bearing the brunt of these challenges were not students. They were the actual people that lived in the neighborhoods who were parking in the wrong direction or parking with their nose into a cul-de-sac or. Parking too close to a stop sign or, or a red curb, whatever the circumstance was. So it became unfortunately very much a political discussion and it. To some degree, the effort was to try and solve a problem. But in the course of solving the problem, we created another problem. And so we just essentially traded what was. We were dealing with on the left hand and, and transferring it to the right hand. So um, and. You know, if you're considering a twenty five dollar citation, for example. We're not talking about, for example, a thousand citations. We're talking four thousand citations in a given year. So we're talking ten times potentially what Judge Coons and his current court is grappling with or, or dealing with right now.
But again, seventy odds percent of them theoretically will just pay.
Right? Yeah. Well, those will go down once you do more. I mean, this is five hundred. So if it's five, if it's going to be, you know, five thousand, you're not going to have that seventy seven percent of paying them.
But you, if I made it to you, you also are going to deal with individuals who feel like the effort is to some degree predatory. Rather than curative. So they don't see it as trying to change behavior.
One comment, I'm going to get.
They don't see this changing behavior. They see it as essentially uh, shooting, shooting.
I can think of two people that are going to.
I love the idea of getting better service and obviously taking anything off the uh, the police department's hands.
Yeah, I, I think as a um. As a, as a philosophical policy discussion, I'm in favor. As a, from a level of service point of view. Of, of continuing down the road and working out the details, maybe not in council, but the staff. Works out the details and brings back a proposed ordinance and. Does all the, you know, the figuring. And then we, and then we look at it and I'm, I'm, I'm not in favor of throwing it out at this point.
The, the second part of that was updating the code. Code hasn't been updated since twenty two thousand and one. And so that's why we had the code up. With what we proposed as changes to the code while we're also talking about this. Um, i- if you look, Alan, will you bring it up? Yeah, I'll give you a couple of the other, of the other ideas that uh, that are policy discussions for this particular thing. Scroll down to. About line one fifteen. You, you'll notice, um, and this is, this is a question. Do, do we want to continue to prohibit? Um, parking recreational vehicles or trailers? And trailers are disconnected. Um, do, do we want to to continue to prohibit? The parking of recreational vehicles or trailers on um. The public, on public streets or, and if we definitely leave this alone, if not, we can. Have a discussion, but that was one of the questions that came up as we're looking at twenty three year old code.
Cousin Eddie Park then. When it comes to visiting.
Non-existent driveway.
And that's exactly right, but when you know parking RV in the street is illegal. Right, well, it's still illegal under this. You just cut out a lot of words and said the same thing.
Yes, but, but the question is, do we want that? And do we want to strike this? And keep this section here, or do we want to allow, or, and, or do we want to prohibit the RV parking continued? Or do we want to permit RV parking on the public streets and the trailer parking?
So when you say prohibit, are you talking about people like Cousin Eddie that visit? Or are we talking people that own a trailer and always have it on the street?
It's right now, under current code. Uh, it's both. An RV cannot park on the street. And a trailer that is disconnected from the vehicle cannot park on the street.
Which also happens every day, all the time.
Yeah, I would say if someone is visiting their family in a motorhome. I don't have a problem with that because they're gone in two or three days. But if a person buys an RV and the street is there RV parking, I don't want that.
Or they're renting it out as an ADU on the curb.
My only trouble about parking was someone who had. A vehicle that was very much Cousin Eddie's and it was there for two weeks in front of my house. I died, so I had. The uh, district police come up.
And, and, and if you have that, if you have that seventy two hour limit in there or that it has to be moved. You know, then if the RVs park there greater than seventy two hours, then that's it, they have to move it. And they'd have to move it someplace else for a while, but.
Yeah, but then they're going to move it in front of my house. I don't want that.
I mean, that's, that's the policy discussion is, I, I don't have a problem with the RV parked, parked in front of somebody's house for. Because it's grandma, but if it becomes the permanent parking, that's when it's the problem.
And I'll give you an example, and this isn't in my neighborhood. There was another neighborhood that I was driving around and you have the houses that. Fakes one way and they're on a corner. And then they have the street with, you know, no house on it. And they'll, and they'll park their fifth wheel there.
Yep.
And to them, it's not a problem because it's their fifth wheel. But the rest of the neighbors like, I don't want Jeff's fifth wheel. In my street because it blocks half the street. Which I like.
Yep.
Yeah.
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 And I, and I will have a problem with the current policy on trailers. The question was, do we want to do anything with RVs? Or do we just leave it?
I don't think it's broken.
Okay, and then if you'll scroll, so I'll leave that one. Um, and then this was the, then there was another policy to quote the question that came up. Do we want to give them, give them the drift with the legislature to. Reduce the number of parking spots in residential areas? Do we want to have the current parking for snow? It says you can't park on the street when there's a, when there's snow between the months of November and April. Or do we want to adopt? What South Jordan does and a couple other cities do, that say you park on the even side of the street. And and South Jordan's is just one side of the street. You park on the even side of the street. All the cars are parked on the even side of the street, so the plow can plow the road, and then and and that's the, that's the parking. So that's the question. That was the question that was part of this was, um, do you want, do we want to continue with the current? The current parking as it is, where where there's no parking on the street at all. When there's snow, or do we want to allow parking on one side of the street?
It's a question I've thought of a lot actually lately. I'd be curious to hear the police slash public works perspective on this, Brian.
Yeah, that's my question is, is how many residents do we have that really rely on park street park? Street parking in order to just get by day to day.
Depends on how many children might you ever have living with them at a time currently. Sometimes it's very.
Give us your perspective.
Uh, my perspective is I'd rather see no cars parked on the street during winter. Chief mentioned about, uh, snow piles getting by. Some of our trucks also have wing piles on them too, which makes it even more of your. Uh, a challenge to maneuver around cars, um. And we, we tell our drivers to report the bad areas, but honestly, they plow. Where there's car, we don't report every single car problem for the, we would overflow the police. And it's, it's already challenging enough to try to maneuver and we're selling accidents, uh, involving our plow trucks due to parked cars where. Our drivers, you know, just wanting to do their job, trying to get to the spot. That's too narrow with also have like boats in the road and it's just. I think it's, if if it was up to me, I would say no cars.
Right, in a perfect world, no cars on the street is great, but that's not the world we live in.
Would. And. Eliminating half of them help.
Having them not be on one side be helpful is basically the reason that we're bringing this is because to me. There's, if in my neighborhood, you got a car here and you got the car there, you do a terrible job in front of my house because of my neighbors parking on the street illegally. But I'm not gonna call and say. I might for something, but I'm not for their cars in the winter.
Like on code enforcement, if, you know, we could do that.
It would definitely help, um, versus now having them on both sides, but most of our roads and the subs are only twenty-five feet wide. And if somebody's parked there, you know, and you got a twelve-foot plow. That we've, you know, it makes it challenging if another car comes around the corner. We've had, we've had times too where a plow will pull up a street. Get around the corner and then have nowhere to go because they can't fit and they'll have to back, you know, which is hazardous to. Drivers, anybody else on the street that have to back all the way back down to where they can. Add a level of service.
Bottom line, there's a lot of cars parked on the street. We're not sending drivers down. It's just.
If the cars were only parked on one side of the street and it was more consistently enforced, would it be better than what we're doing now?
Possibly, but you're gonna have that snowball go all the way to one side of the road too. Depending on which way you're plowing, it could be against the cars.
The people are always gonna be, well, I didn't know which side it was. Always, even if you tell them.
Yeah.
And say, even odd, oh, I thought I was on the right side of the street.
Wait, are you talking about the first number or the last number? Which one's?
Was that east or west, or was it north or south?
Even.
Yeah, but I get what you're saying, but people are still gonna go. I don't know what side you meant.
Yeah, I think.
But that may be an education piece and one day.
I even think with an education piece, you're still gonna get people that are gonna go.
So 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 my question would be, would we just throw our hands up and say, don't give a crap about parking on the city and not, and just continue to do.
Those cities and see how well it's worked for them. Yeah, I'd be curious to hear from South Jordan, and South Jordan Public Works and ask them.
Yeah.
I don't think it's throwing your hands up in the air. I think it's understanding that you can make as many code laws as you want to. It's not gonna change the habit of everybody.
Real people. I think it's more simple just to say no parking on the street during a.
Would be my thing.
Okay, we can just leave the code the way it is.
Kind of what I'm thinking is just easier to just say no.
It is easier.
But is it? It's not that big of a deal though.
It may not be, yeah, it may not be better, and again, I'm somebody who's changing my opinion. If South Jordan comes and says, no, it's great, here's why.
Yeah.
I'll call Ken's brother and ask him.
Break half the narrow streets too, so.
Yeah, they breaks, yeah.
We have narrow streets also.
So to 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 follow this up. With the exception of this one, so right here, unless we call South Jordan and we get some better numbers that the 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 one side works. We we leave, we leave this section of code alone. We leave the RV parking alone and leave and leave it that the way it is. Uh, and the other sections were okay. And so would this be if we clean up a couple of these things, like taking them obviously out? Uh, are you willing to bring this back, uh, for future action with the councils?
Yeah, I think adding, I think we had most in agreement of adding the civil penalty as a, as an option. And then, um, and then the rest of it is mostly, well, if it's not broken, leave it.
Yep.
That's kind of what that's.
Yep, we'll 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 clean up the the red line version so that it does that and.
Patrick will probably do the drafting on this, sorry.
It's already drafted.
I I got this, but I I wanna make sure you guys are clear too, because you'll need to make sure.
We'll, 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 we'll work on it and we'll get the stuff to Alan the way it needs to be.
Needs to go through legal.
Legal, but legal works on it. But I think we, we can, we can give them a lot of the stuff so that they don't have to deal with it.
Right, well, I mean, you've already deleted six thousand words, so we need to know what those words were and why.
One other piece of this that I'm curious about, see if we want to visit, and that's like I just mentioned how Harriman just raised their fee to a hundred bucks a parking ticket. We actually have it in the code forty dollars.
Yeah.
Um, are other civil penalties in the code or are they on the fee schedule?
I I think it should be on the fee schedule.
I, that's what I was thinking too.
Not codified.
While we're in here, while we're here. Yeah, let's, let's refer it to the fee schedule, right? Leave it in there versus not less than the amount that it says on the fee schedule, but put it in the fee schedule.
That's easy.
That's what I was saying.
Yeah.
And as long as we're having this discussion, I heard that maybe some people in the room might want to see some of those fees increased a little bit. Should we see if there's four of us that want to send out information to Denise?
To, uh, increase parking fine numbers or?
Semis, I believe.
Yeah.
Oh, it's a semi increase here, huh?
You will notice in this section, um, the one thing that we also did. Is, um, Alan, go to lines one thirty.
I'm definitely okay with.
One thirty-two.
Yeah.
Next. With all of our parking stuff is not in the same section of code. The, the parking of trucks, so what we, what we did was we removed the parking of trucks out of the other section of the code. Put it here with a reference that says truck parking, see this other section of code.
And and commercial vehicles?
Oh, we're gonna talk.
We're gonna talk about that.
Um, the other thing is, is since it was part of the, since it was actually part of the, the order, the, the packet. There is in the, in the truck section where the, uh. Parking truck, where the truck is that we're gonna delete and say, refer over to this section. There was a reference to Newbing, there's a, there's a whole reference to the truck routes and the truck routes need to be updated, uh, from what I understand.
We have a proposal that we're working on.
In the meantime, while we're, while we're working on that particular section of the code. Do you, do we wanna update Newbingham Highway to Copper Hills Parkway, or do we just wanna leave it there?
There's no Newbingham Highway.
If we rename the street, let's rename, well, there is Newbingham Highway West or fifty-six.
Because it makes the truck route, it makes the truck route, doesn't make sense when you do it in the truck route, because it says seventy-eighth. From Newbingham Highway to Bacchus and Newbingham Highway's not there, so. Okay, we'll, we'll change the name to new, from Newbingham there to Copper Hills, and then the rest of the truck routes will wait for. The truck routes to be updated. Okay.
But there is still a Newbingham Highway, Mountain View.
Right, but what it says, the truck route says from seventy-first and Newbingham.
Right, so that doesn't exist.
So that doesn't exist, so the truck route would be seventy-eighth to Copper Hills Parkway.
Right.
And then maybe after, but. Okay.
Discussion. That was a good, that was a good discussion. I'm glad we had the staff that we had here.
Very much so.
Um, get all the perspectives that we need. Is there anything else we need to chat about on that one? Is the next one is. On my computer in a second. Is discussion of Title thirteen amendments thirteen dash two dash three, talking about definitions.
How many of these people need to be pissed for DNC?
Okay, that's a good question. So Title thirteen amendments, this is the commercial vehicle, right, Alan?
Yeah, this will be Megan Jensen and Paul Dodd.
Okay, um, on D, sidewalk, curb and gutter, I mean, it's any. Any other stuff needs to be here for that, and it's still here. It doesn't need to be here for B and C. In other words, it makes us to take things out of order and do D.
They all leave.
Some folks from roads here.
Yeah, let's do that. Let's take this out of order. Uh, without objection, we'll go to D first. Sorry, Alan, I know. Well, I know we looked at this like seventeen times and kept rearranging things, but.
Apparently, we're not entertaining enough for some of the peoples.
Right? So I think we should do D next and then also move in some fans. So let's go to D, um, who's, who's leading this?
Brian.
So let's talk about.
Here, do you want me at the table?
Uh, talk to you. You're fine.
Share by chat.
There you go.
I'm ready. All right, well, hopefully you guys, you folks had some time to read over this and. We're asking to revise the, uh, sidewalk code in eight-five-two, um. The purpose of this is to to kind of shit, well, it is to shift. Um, the fees onto the city rather than the resident. Currently, right now. Uh, Jason and his crew's going to a neighborhood, and if the sidewalk is heaved by the trees or damaged or there's strip steps. Um, the current code, we have to go ask the resident. We have to go ask the resident if they're willing to pay for the concrete. Nine times out of ten, they tell you pound sand, this is your right away. It's more than not doing it. And the ones that do say, yeah, we'll pay for the concrete. Uh, Jason has to go back, do a bid, get back with the resident. And if they wait too long, we have to rebid it again, get an accurate bid. It's just very inefficient, and what it's doing is kicking our sidewalk repair even further down the road. Because if they say no, we're not gonna pay it, we just move on to the next sidewalk sections.
There's so many, yeah.
Then there's, we we got twenty years worth of work. Or more, there's so much.
Security, baby.
Damaged sidewalks that need to be repaired, and in doing that, we're increasing the liability to the city and not getting those fixed.
Right, that's what I was gonna ask too, is, and I understand, then Josh and Craig, and Josh Paul, correct me if I'm wrong. Um, we're not liable if something trips on a sidewalk we didn't know about. Uh, once we've gone to the resident and said, well, you paid a fix that sidewalk, they know we know about, right?
That's right.
And and then we're, uh, and then we're liable if something happens while we're waiting for this process to play out, which could drag on and on, so.
Or if it's even ever rectified.
Trip, so they can sue us to pay.
So I have a little question, Ryan. So oftentimes it is tree roots, right? So what do we do with the tree roots? And what happens if the tree dies? And what happens if that tree is on the outside and not on the street side? As we go in, what do we do with that?
So what we've done in the past, the last couple of years, when we ran into these situations. We've, uh, we've actually, either first, first line of defense is the root. Try to get the root pruned down so you can get great on the sidewalk.
But that can kill the tree.
It it could. The bigger, the bigger, if it's a mature tree, the bigger problem is that root's gonna grow back. And and you're, it comes, so you're gonna have the same heave and the same elevation problem years down the road.
So what we need to grade up the rest of the sidewalk.
We also, the residents sign a free, uh, release waiver to give us permission to. I mean, too many root for any order if we have to remove the tree. So we talk to the resident before we do any of that, but. I honestly haven't seen, um, any trees that have died, um, from root pruning and we. Um, we've taken some decent sized roots, but trees are a big problem, uh, for the sidewalk, but it's not. It's not just those sidewalks we're talking about. It's also, we have sidewalks in older neighborhoods that are like. It could be thirty-plus years old where the top is just balled off and it's, you know, no fault of the residents. With the way, and some of these neighborhoods might have lower income people that can't afford to pay for it, so it's just hard to just walk away from it. And move to the next one. We do our best to mark the hazardous paint. Um, and but it's, you know, it's still, it's, it's not the most efficient process, because when we, like, if we go into a neighborhood. If we could just pay for the materials, it would be more of a notification process. To each resident, we'd go and say, hey, we're gonna be working out here. We're gonna replace your sidewalk versus going there. Giving them an estimate to each and every, for whether it be one section of sidewalk or two, and then. You know, you'll get people argue that the city sidewalk, they shouldn't have to pay for it, um, there'll be people like, well, let me think about it, and you won't hear back from them. So it's just hard to, it kills the efficiency, and then we have to adjust all of our estimates, depending on how many people accept, because. Um, depending on how big the concrete load is in a truck. Um, the price is varies, so then you have to go back and give a different price.
So are tree roots, because in this, I don't, I didn't write down the line, sorry, but in this, somewhere it talks about if it's abuse. Is a tree root abuse?
No.
No.
Abuse would be if they go out, let's say, they pull something heavy on the sidewalk. They damage it, be neglectful, it's on them to replace it.
Then my other question is, it talked about on line thirteen and fourteen, it talked about sidewalk that's basically the driveway. And it seemed to me like it was treating that differently.
It's, I believe that's the drive approach area, which, um, and we've, we've never, um, maintained the drive approach. Uh, that's the area in the park strip, so.
Oh, okay.
Sideway in the driveway.
So my last question is, how much do we get lost in city?
It it vary, it's gonna vary, so right now we have, we we have funding. Um, set aside for safe sidewalks, and then we have B and C road funds that we we pull from.
Um, really, I wanna know how much more you're gonna ask.
Can I, can I answer that? We're not gonna ask for more money. This just allows us to deploy the money we already get for safe sidewalks more, we feel like more efficiently.
Go for it.
It's not a budget, it's not gonna be more money. Now, we definitely have a major sidewalk need, repair need. That over time will require more money, but the change in this policy, uh.
Yeah.
Changes the way we. It doesn't drive the need for.
It's gonna, we have to re sidewalks, do the work quick or not, the way down residents. There is, there is an increase, a little bit of increase this year.
It would have been cheaper.
For the, for fifty thousand for, we're trying to implement a, um, reimbursement program for residents. Where we can't get to their sidewalk and they wanna replace, they can hire a contractor. And we'll pay up to a certain amount to help, so they could get that sidewalk repaired, which. I think in the long run will save us money also, um, due to the fact that we're not pulling a whole crew, a lot of our crews over there to do it.
Does anybody think this is a bad idea? Okay, that's what I thought.
Okay, next.
If we're going to work on this code. Some of it was written in two thousand and one. So, who's gonna draft this one for the attorney? Patrick, uh, Chase, is that yours? If I give you a couple of suggestions on some wording to eliminate some words, just to decrease the wordiness or. Can I just send them to you?
Absolutely.
Are you okay with that?
Okay.
Oh, can I just add one more thing, just on the trees? No, yeah, I lost my train of thought.
Doesn't own any trains, so I don't know how you can lose one.
Free waivers, so if we have to remove a tree, if the resident agrees for us to move, remove the tree. Either city staff will take it out, or we have a contractor, the contractor that will come and remove it. It's too big for our, our guys to do, to have the appropriate equipment. But in doing that, if we remove the tree, we also offer them a tree waiver to replace the tree that's removed. So we can keep, keep building our, um, urban forest.
Yeah.
But we ask them not to plant it in the park, but somewhere in the other. That's another thing we're trying to do with the residents.
I think you just, uh, your crew just did one in my neighborhood. There was a corner of a lady that was never gonna fix it because she didn't have money.
Yeah.
And you guys took out the trees and you didn't, they didn't get rid of the sidewalks, they picked up the slabs, moved them over. Reglated it and put them back in. So there wasn't a cost for cement, there was just a cost for the labor.
Yeah, we have a machine that you can cut the seams and then suction cups it out. And I'll put it off those sides, fix the grade and set it up. Yeah, they do that. They drill holes in it and they'll pump it back.
Yeah, I've seen that.
Um, but they can only, they, they use that a lot and as much as possible, but they can't do that to sidewalk that's got any cracks in it. Cause obviously when you lift it, it'll break. They also, they also take sections of sidewalk that they pull out from somewhere. And they save them and, I mean, they're pretty resourceful and then they'll take them to another area and use them.
They're all the same size, basically.
Yeah. We also do, uh, mud jacking and grinding and all that too, but I was gonna mention, uh, the trees. Uh, a lot of, we get a lot of complaints too, that they're city approved trees or they were back in the day and that lifts the sidewalk, so.
Yeah, that tree replacement, that's a good plan. We do have a list of trees that you can put in approved.
Yeah, we have, uh, an approved street tree, those.
I think you've got, I think you've got affirmative, uh, affirmative counsel here to that one. That's a good one to take out of order. Like it.
All right.
Thank you. Thanks for being here, guys. Appreciate it. Yeah, let's go back to B. This is, uh, Title thirteen, the definitions. And leading the discussion on this.
The definition is Megan and Tim Paul.
Megan and Paul, I assume you've rehearsed this and have it down.
So we have some terms used in our code under storage of commercial vehicles in residential zones. Um, that aren't defined anywhere in our code, which makes it difficult for code enforcement to know exactly what is a. Commercial vehicle or construction equipment. So. Um, just looking at to define those things for now. Um, and then we can change the policy at a later time, um, but just so that we can enforce it. And we'd like to get the definitions in.
And this is kind of being pushed by, you need to a certain degree. Um, the reason behind this is. The definitions that we have in this section of the code are definitions that we have litigated four years ago. And we lost on a commercial trailer case that we definitely should have won. A, a resident had two semi truck trailers. Huge, big semi truck trailers. And she had them in her backyard. Um, but she was using them for like a store, a store, hey. You know, putting hay and things in like that. Um, and they were right next to the property of their neighbor and the neighbor kept complaining about it and code enforcement. You know, went out and said, you can't have commercial trailers. And, um, we didn't have a definition for a commercial trailer and she, she argued. The state definition and under the state definition, it had to be in, you know, basically in use or being, you know, could be used as. Uh, commercial activity and she was like, I'm not doing that, I'm using it as a storage shed and so it's not a commercial trailer. And we won that case with our ALJ, she appealed it to the district court and we lost at the district court. And because of the definitions, um, so she got to keep her trailer and the issue isn't that she gets to keep it, it's that. Code enforcement doesn't know what's allowed and what's not allowed and code enforcement wants to have clarity as to what they can say. You can't have in your yard and you can't have in your yard, based off what we, we've already said, things you can't have. So let's just define those things. So it's, we don't have the arguments that come later to say, well. No, I don't think this is, you know, this doesn't apply or this doesn't, no, this doesn't work. We don't have definitions for a lot of these in this section of the code right now. The, the code itself, I'm sure, we've brought this before council two other times. And the other two times, we kind of got caught up on wanting to change the entire code, which. Definitely, I think, could use, you know, there could be a lot of things that we could change. Um, that, you know, if council wanted to change the policies on what we keep and what we don't keep, but what can be stored or what can't be stored. That's a very, you know, good discussion to have and to be done, but the last two times. We got into those discussions, never agreed on how we were gonna change it, but we still never did the definitions. And so I'm hoping this time, let, let's at least try to get the definitions of what we are already. Uh, you know, we already have prohibited, let's define those to make Brock's job easier, so he will know what we. And we have another case right now, where this issue's coming up again.
So let me ask you this question. Without changing the other policy. And we adopt thi- this definition, which by the way, I'll tell you, I'm gonna be locally adamant against that definition and I'll tell you why in a minute. That automatically makes everything, when we change the definition, makes everything illegal, correct? Because it's, because we're defining commercial vehicle. And there are a bunch of things that say you can't have a commercial vehicle in a residential zone. Whatever residential zone means, because we don't define residential zone. Keep in mind, we don't have a good definition of residential zone, right? Is that A zones? Is that RRs? Is that Rs? Is that PC? Is that PRD?
I think there would probably be anything that says residential, but yeah, it's not clear, but I like definitions, so it's clear.
So, there's no definition there. But as soon as we change the definition in code. Makes everything that's already in code that says it's illegal, illegal, correct?
Anything that doesn't fit that, or anything that.
The current definition will, yeah, would be illegal.
Will be illegal.
Okay.
I, I. And I can't do that. I don't, I don't care what the definition is. I, I have no dog in the fight of what we want, so the. What we, you know, the city wants to define. I don't care what's defined, it's just it will make my job easier and Brock's job easier if something's defined. And I don't care what the definition is. If it's not this definition, you have a different one, that's great.
Based on this definition, I'm gonna jump in here. It's a motor vehicle maintained for transportation of persons that operates as a carrier for hire or property. If I'm a lift driver, my car fits in that definition. That means that I can't park my own car in my own driveway because commercial vehicles are prohibited in West Jordan City right now. Right? When I was driving here today. I drove through a neighborhood. Something similar to the neighborhood that at least one other council member lives in. We won't throw him under the bus, will we, Chad? But as I drove here, as I drove through our neighborhood today. There were at least four trucks that would meet this definition. That don't make any difference to the neighborhood, but they're all people who have a van. Or a truck that's for Joe's Heating and Cooling. That's a van with a ladder on the top. It's a trailer with. Somebody's child company did him on the side of it. It's.
I don't think those would be illegal under.
Of course it is. It's a motor vehicle, truck, trailer.
Definition, but under the what's prohibited, it says that the commercial trailer has to exceed one and a half tons of gross vehicle weight exceeding twelve thousand pounds.
Yeah, so if we, if we go back to the actual code.
If your Uber is a semi trailer, then, then you're in trouble.
Yeah, so if you go back to the actual code, it does have a weight limit currently today. So it says commercial vehicles that exceed X. So yes, the Uber might be a commercial vehicle under this definition. But since in the code it doesn't exceed the twelve thousand pounds, then it would still be okay.
That's why I will, that's, I, I gotta tell you, that's why I wanna look at policy holistically.
Well, yeah.
Uh, wh- wh- when, when we, when we start picking up. Sections of code, okay, we wanna have a definition. Great, I got it. But how does the definition affect all the rest of the code? And without considering the second and third order of effects of what's in front of us. It's, it's hard to say if that's the definition, I won't, I won't.
Like it did, that's the way I read it, was exactly the way it was said, that this is a commercial vehicle, but a commercial vehicle that exceeds this is what's illegal. That's the way I read it, so to me, to me, it, to me, it did address down the line, A, B, C, like you were saying.
But the only thing in front of us is the definition, we don't have all the rest of the.
But the definition is applied to a section of code that's already there. Um. Oh, I got a question for you though. A bigger issue for me is the definition of stored or parked. Um, because it talks about the construction equipment, which you have the definition here. And this is, this has been brought up in preliminary discussions on this. Um, no construction or earth moving, earth moving equipment, see that ten times. Uh, can be stored or parked on any partial residential zone. Period. That one doesn't have a weight limit, it doesn't have any, it just said, it's just the end of the code. So if I'm working, if I got a project going in my backyard and I'm installing a fish pond. And I've got a backhoe that I rented from Home Depot for the weekend. It, it can't be there.
Right now, we have a case of, um. Something very similar, um, that's going along with that. And so that's part of the issue. And with these definitions. They, we've provided also other definitions from other cities related to, you know. The construction equipment, some of them also have size requirements. In fact. I think it would be wise to have a size requirement in the definition, since it's not in the code for, for, and that there are other definitions that are listed. From the examples from other cities that do have the size requirements. We even, I, I know in part of the, uh. Making part of the stack report at all, it actually recommends that, you know, maybe we do a horsepower. You know, for these dirt, you know, instead of this weight, you know, you know, above forty horsepower, above, you know, if someone has one of those. Small lawn tractors.
Yeah.
That's not gonna be, you know, it's twenty five horsepower.
But this also says any lot in a residential zone. How do you develop a lot in residential zone without having big?
Well, you gotta have.
There's gotta be exceptions if there's an active.
Right, like, how do you, how do you excavate a basement? If I'm not allowed to park, uh, an excavator, a big excavator.
And I agree, I think that's the reason why we, you know, we're here tonight to talk about those issues.
That, that goes into the same thing. Because if you look at the definition. Agricultural tractor is a construction equipment and it's barred from an agricultural zone in West Jordan. If we say an agricultural zone is a residential zone because it's A one or A five or whatever. You can't even run your farm with a farm tractor because it meets the definition. So that's.
So you also have to define residential zone as pertains to this section of code.
That, that, that's right. I mean.
They say residential zone in this section is not the same as residential zone in the zoning code, right?
Well, I don't, and I don't know if we have a definition of residential zone that includes agricultural zones or how that's.
Yeah, agricultural zones allow residential use.
Yeah.
But they're not, they're not residential.
What about an RRs? RR ones, they're a one acre, they're a one acre farm. They could have, they could have, that's a, by definition, that's probably a residential.
Yeah.
And, and so you've got, you've got the rural residential prop- properties that. By definition are probably farm, farm homes. And we can't have a, a farm tractor on.
Kevin's got a good point. Any way you define a commercial vehicle or a construction equipment, if you put in these exceptions and things like that. You're still gonna run into issues, well, what about this residential zone? What about that residential zone? What about this use case? So I think, I think he's got a point in the thirteen eight fourteen is gonna, is gonna need an entire. You can't just take the square peg and the round hole and, and make it work. I think you, we're gonna have to make the hole square too, to, you know.
We can put a lot of that in the definition of the, of the construction equipment. If we wanted to go by horsepower, they, obviously even a one acre. Um. Residential, rural residential that might, that might be defined as resi- a residential zone in our code. I mean, you don't need to have, you know, one of, you, you know, there are tractors that are. You, you, a huge combine. Yeah, you don't need a combine out there to, for a one acre lot, right? Um, that's why it's been at least, uh, proposed that we put, you know, some type of horsepower requirement or weight requirement on those. Cause so someone can have one of those yard tractors or those tractors, you know, for a small, you know, farm. Um, that's something that could be discussed, that could be put in the definition. My concern is. For example, you know, for the dirt moving equipment and construction equipment, under this dirt moving equipment, there's zero definition. Are you allowed to have a shovel? Cause it moves dirt.
Wheelbarrow.
So does Brock go out and tell people they can't have a wheelbarrow or they can't have a shovel? Well, we have a case right now where someone has, you know, the, one of these little backhoes out there parked in the yard. And, you know, they're complaining that, no, it doesn't comply, you know, it's not a part of this issue. And we don't have good definitions as to what is dirt moving equipment. Is a backhoe, all backhoes, only backhoes over a certain size?
Well, right, and, and what, and what lot? Because like I said, if it's under construction and you're, you're excavating a basement. You're gonna need the big.
And I know Brock deals with that right now. It's not in the code, but if someone is in the active construction, they don't enforce this. Um, again, it would be better if it's in the.
But it could be enforced if it wasn't Brock and Brock retires and somebody else takes Brock's place and goes, you know what, that's against the code.
Since we don't have a definition for parks or stored right now.
Someday.
I don't think we do. Do we have a definition for, if we, I mean, if they're, again, we could add a definition for park to store meaning, you know. That means that you're not in active construction and it's, you know, being stored near, you know, we can put that in the definition.
Yeah, okay, so, but, but like Kelvin said, by the time we get all these things into definitions, we might as well just rewrite.
We're gonna, we're four years in the making doing this first one, so I'm trying to do the second one.
That, here, here's, here's the difficulty that I don't think it'll take four years. Particularly with thirteen eight fourteen. Um, you know, it talks one and a half tons, uh. We were talking about Scott, who's got a neighbor who's got a five fifty truck. Well, it means that. I mean, if, you, you know, and, and the current, the current ordinance says you can't have. A truck more than twelve thousand pounds, but you can park a semi there. Okay, why can you park? Let me, let me ask, and I know what happened, is that sometime in two thousand and nine, when this was amended. Somebody, somebody came to the city council and said. I got a ticket for parking my semi, uh, but I'm an over the truck driver that I, I own my own rig. I gotta park to the side of my house, it's not bothering anybody. Why can't I park my semi truck on the side of my yard if it's not bothering anybody? So the council adds an exception. So we have this twelve thousand pound limit, but you can also park semi, nothing in between. And, and, you know. The, the other part of this that I, I'm having super fundamental problems with. Is, you know, we talk about active construction, whatever. Look, I don't wanna have the guy, I don't wanna have the situation like it is in Bob's neighborhood where we've got. Like is in Bob's neighborhood where we've got probably. An active landfill that Brock has refused to enforce. I gotta throw you under the bus, Brock. Last meeting, that's why we, 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 we could say that. Is that, you know, I, I'm not talking about a guy that, that's using his, uh, a yard for. Storage of a lot of vehicles. But the fact of the matter is. You know, what happens if a self-employed person owns a Bobcat? Or owns a little Kubota tractor? The, the, those, you know, and they park it on the trailer on the side of their house, their back of the house. And we're now saying, well, you can't do that because that's illegal.
Well, that's why in the definition, we can put the weight limit for that equipment as well and make it of what we want. I mean, I have a hard time. I agree with both of you. That the title needs work. Um, not just the definitions. I agree with both of you that the title needs work. And so it's a. From my position. That we've come twice about the title itself, not just definitions, and the title's been worked. But we haven't been, there's been a lot, a lot of people have different opinions on what should be allowed and what shouldn't be allowed. And so with those different opinions. We haven't come to an agreement as a city as to what. The modifications to the actual title should be and how it should be changed. But we still. Now are. Prohibiting these things today. It's in our code. They are being prohibited today. And we first came, we reworked on this title four years ago, came back again, I don't know, a year or two later. Still have never made the amendments to it. And so I'm asking for a Band-Aid. Because we haven't been able to get the remedy for the full thing, which I do think we need to get. But I'm asking for a Band-Aid since this is prohibited now. Let's at least just define these things, make it as good as we can now. Unless we rework the whole title. If you, obviously the council can decide how they want to do it. I'm, you know, that's the, I'm just explaining why we're asking for these definitions only instead of the whole, the whole title.
You know, and it comes back in that, that first discussion. I remember the discussion four years ago during code, cause I remember I sit in my basement. I remember. I was sitting, but, um. I remember that discussion and, and it comes back, and I think this, I think it bears repeating. What is the problem that we're trying to solve? If, if the problem that we're trying to solve is, well, we need to give the legal department definition so they know what's allowed, what's not allowed. That's, that's not a big enough reason for me to, to do this. Allow more things. Unless something, unless somebody's being injured, somebody, somewhere, there's, there's a. There's a problem that we're, that we need to fix. Then let's identify the problem. But if the problem is, well, somebody's got some trailers in their backyard, we don't know if those qualify as commercial or not commercial. What's the problem with the trailers being in the backyard? Was the neighbor complaining? Cause they look out their back window and they see a trailer? You know, maybe, maybe the biggest person with the trailer looks out the window and sees the dog crap in the backyard. They don't like that either, so they're gonna come propose coaching. I mean. You know, let's identify, you know, and or, you know, buried concrete or whatever it may be. Um, let's identify what the problem is that we're trying to solve. And then we can identify if the Band-Aid helps or if it doesn't help. Cause right now I think the Band-Aid. Almost causes more questions than it provides answers for.
A question I would have with this, I mean, you've put a lot of cities and what they put as definitions, but do we know if those worked? I mean.
And they won or lost court.
Yeah, are, are any of these any good? I mean, there's a bunch of them, they all seem a little bit different, but. Are, are any of them working or are they them solving what could be the problem? That would be something I would. You know, like to see who, who is, who has found the right Band-Aid.
As, I mean, as long as the definition is clear as to what's prohibited or not prohibited, I, it's gonna be fine. I don't think it really matters what. What is prohibited, what isn't. Where the problem comes in is where, you know, we cite earth moving equipment. Well, what in the world does earth moving equipment mean? Um, you know, what, what does that mean? Does that mean what Brock? What Brock thinks it means? Is that what it means? No, it should be what the council thinks it means and what they wanna put in there. And the problem comes, you know, and that's the problem Brock deals with when someone is calling and complaining about a backhoe. And someone's property over and over again, you know, Brock has to deal with those complaints. And, you know, the neighbors come up and said, you know, it says it right here in the code. They can't have this. They can't have this. And Brock is dealt with having to enforce this and we try to enforce this. And then, you know, the neighbors complain about. That he enforces it and then the person who's being enforced against sues us because, well. Is this, you know. What do you mean by earth moving equipment? It's, this is a small backhoe. It's not this, you know. You have all these issues and there's no definition. And I, I agree with you that. It, it's a difficult issue to try to fix the whole thing. I do think in the Band-Aid scenario I'm talking about is that. If we're gonna have these prohibitions in there, we should define them. If we want to delete the prohibitions completely today, I would love that as well. I do not.
See, and that's, that's, that's kinda where I would lean, and I would lean to. Let the health department define what the actual problems are. Let the health department enforce, there's a. Bearing concrete and asphalt in the backyard, it's a health, health violation, right? It's a groundwater issue. It's an EPA issue. More so than it is, oh, I'm your neighbor and I don't like that you're doing that.
Well, if you make that a square peg that that round pole, you make that pole so big, this peg falls through.
It's cool, right?
I personally want some parameters. I don't want whatever you wanna do. I think that takes away from quality of life, and I think we owe it to the residents to find a balance. I understand your frustration because I kind of remember that meeting. I remember one before that. Um. I guess for me, I would like to see your proposal for the code and see what your proposals are, just as we brought a proposal for. Parking, have that sent to us with what changes you proposed. And then have one of these meetings where we can duke it out, whether. Whether we're gonna have no restrictions or lots of restrictions.
Couple of suggestions. One, let's eliminate the word park. Parking is in the other section of code, okay? Um, and, and we, we talk about storage of vehicles and residential properties. Here, here is maybe the way that we. Temporarily fix this. I would be willing to adopt. Except there's a grammatical error. It's, it should be equipment or machinery used, um, instead of equipment of, but. If, if I have the, if I had that definition. I would be willing to adopt that definition if at the same time we strike. Thirteen dash eight dash fourteen. Adopt the definitions, strike the code. That allows earth moving equipment and those kind of, that, that. Because I think if we adopt that, we're gonna put a lot of people out of compliance automatically. Because they're gonna have earth moving equipment in their backyard, cause they got farm tractors. And those kinda things, but I'm gonna be willing to adopt the definitions if we strike that code. Fix that in the code and then. Take it right and hash out what we want in thirteen dash eight dash four. Because I think if we adopt the definitions without dealing with thirteen dash eight dash fourteen. It makes the Band-Aid worse.
Yeah.
Because it, it makes some things illegal, but we don't want to be illegal. And so. We, we strike that or we put in thirteen dash eight dash fourteen that, um. We, we strike out everything after the word residential zone in the third line that says you can't have. Trucks greater than one and a half tons and twelve thousand pounds, strike the rest. And.
Can I ask a question?
Or something, I, I don't know. I'm just trying to think of a way to do this because I just think the Band-Aid's gonna make it worse.
If you strike thirteen eight fourteen, do you wanna put the weight limits in the definitions?
No, he's not talking about striking all of it. He's talking about taking out the earth moving part, the construction part.
Leaving the weight limit part in, right?
Yeah.
And we could probably leave the, the semi truck section in because that's a specific exception. We strike the construction and earth moving stuff. Temporarily until we can hammer that out. And so what it does is it excludes the big truck. It allows the semi. So what, that's the current ordinance, but then we strike the construction codes, the, the construction equipment stuff. Hammer that out and hammer the rest of the vehi- the, the, the truck stuff. You know, may, maybe it, maybe it needs to be, um, you know, I'm just talking outside the box. Maybe it, you, you know, you can have one vehicle. Or maybe it's that, you know, the commercial trailer. I'm gonna tell you, the commercial trailer issue. Was not the fact it was a commercial trailer. It was because it was so damn tall. Right? And so the question, the, so the question is, it's not the earth moving equipment. It's, nobody, nobody's gonna care if you've got a thirty foot flatbed trailer in your backyard, right? Nobody's gonna care.
Oh, yes, they will.
Well, somebody might, but anyways. I, I can par- I could park a thirty foot flatbed trailer in my backyard and nobody'd see it. So the question is, is, is it as much a height limit? Which goes back to, to, to council member Jacob's question. What's the, what's the purpose of this? Is that a height limit? As opposed to a size limit? And, yeah, we can, we can, you know, I mean, it's like, do I wanna combine park to my, my house next door? No, but I got, but I, I got pallets, I got pallets of rock. That are fifteen feet from my backyard that stick eight feet high above my fence. Are they outside of code? I don't know. May, may not be.
Call out the plane and find out.
So the real question is, the real question is, what are we trying to solve?
I think part of what we're trying to solve is, is, uh. Companies renting homes. One of the problems is companies renting homes. And then having all those workers live in that home and all those trucks being at that home. They're on this neighborhood, they're in the driveway, but there are six guys living in that home. And so they're on the street. They're in the, they're, and they're big construction company trucks because they're running a business out of that home.
And I agree with you.
So I think that's one of the problems.
Is, is the problem, is the problem the trucks?
Right.
Or is it the number of trucks?
So can we, can I answer that question? With the real world, uh, current examples, um. Maybe Brock will, Brock can speak more to this, but we have a number of, of issues that we're dealing with. Council member Whitlock talked about. Quality of life and, and, uh, I guess image of the city. But Brock, can you maybe just explain what you just mentioned to me?
Whisper, tell them what you just whispered.
Yeah, this is real, real life.
Whisper if you, yeah. We have, we have one case that we, we've dealt with a half a dozen times. The guy. Has four skid steers in his third car driveway and he has ten electric ditch diggers. That hook to those skid steers that he rents out. Well, we keep going back and forth with him. They're under the twelve thousand weight limit on the ditch diggers. But why can't he have the four skid steers? He has a home occupation license. That allows him one truck, one trailer, but no outside storage. So this will actually get into the home occupation licensing's one. Um, and, and we get that on a regular basis. We have another guy in another neighborhood and I'm familiar with the one you're referring to, council member. This guy's got two full-size dump trucks back into his third car driveway or his RV park. The neighbor looks to their fence and they see these big asphalt dump trucks. Well, they're over the twelve thousand. Uh, I believe the one that you're referring to is a large construction company here doing temporary work. They rented a home. And they did. They had six employees living in this house legally.
I just guessed six, but I guess I'm a good guesser.
They had five trucks. There were six employees living in the house. And three of them were on this street, two were on that street, cause their personal vehicles were in the driveway. They're legally parked on the roadway. Do you want? Five construction trucks full of equipment and stuff parked on your roadways?
I think the mayor would tell you from the number of people he talked to about that, the answer is no.
And that's what we're trying to do.
But something weird, well, that goes back to my, my other question. As we're trying to solve the issues. The twelve thousand, the twelve thousand pound one seems to solve the, the dump truck issue. If it's, if, if I'm looking out my fence and I'm seeing these big old dump trucks, that's a height issue. If the guy's running out, running a rental business, then. The. The number of vehicles that he has becomes the issue, not the one vehicle. Right? If I had one skid, one skid stair with a ditch thing on the back, most of your neighbors aren't gonna care. Some might, but most, most, most people aren't gonna care. It's the, it's the, the, the four. It's the four and the ten and those kinda things. And so the question is. Is it the numbers? And it goes back to that, that fundamental question, what are we trying to solve? It's quality of life issue. I don't wanna look out my backyard. Of course, I look in my backyard and I got neighbors who park. Their, they, they park their car on the patio because it's a driveway, you know, because it's a. Concrete, it's a concrete circus, but does it bother you? No. And I mean, I, I know it's parked out there, cause I look in the backyard and they go. Okay, I wouldn't wanna have to open the gate every time I get out there.
Ryan was here, he would probably disagree with the weight, cause this guy driving those dump trucks over our public right of way. Is going to hurt the sidewalk.
Well, I agree, I agree.
It is a weight issue, not just a height issue.
Well, but, but, but there is a weight, but we can assign a weight, but we can also assign a height. Because the commercial trailers, the issue with the commercial trailers, it really, when it comes down to it. Is that you had these big tall. Truck, trailer sitting along a fence line and somebody didn't like it because they were uglier than hell. Right? That's the issue. Um, so we're trying to, we're trying to define saying, oh, you can't have a semi trailer. Well, heck, you can't have anything over ten feet tall. That, that, that becomes, that becomes very, that becomes very simple, right? Is that anything greater? I mean, you already got a stick that's thirteen and a half feet high because you measured for the trees.
Sixteen to get to the fifteen level, but how do I go onto the property to measure the height of that truck? You got an app on your phone?
Yep, my phone does.
From thirty, forty feet away?
I don't know, I've never tried.
Oh, what? It's not hard, it's not hard to come up. Yeah, but you know what? If you can see it visually, here's, here's. And, and this is where I, I don't pretend to, to pretend to understand criminal law. Uh, I don't prosecute it, nor do I want to. But, but the fact of the matter is, if you can see it from the street, sticking above, that it's. A certain height, probably gives you probable cause to say, I, I need, let me look at it, if not, I'll go get a warrant, measure it.
And obviously if the neighbor who's complaining lets you measure something in their yard. And you can say this measured to be twelve feet and it was taller than that. You know, you definitely have.
You know, if it's parked against the fence, you hold up a twelve foot stick and it's four feet above the twelve foot sticks, then it'd be pretty easy. Um, if it's, if it's in the middle of a five yard pa- five acre pasture and it's sitting right in the middle, it's gonna be a little bit. Harder that, to deal with than the one sitting right along the fence. But I, I would, that, that commercial vehicle definition, probably not bad, but.
So are we okay to go with that definition and just strike after the? After the any lot parcel with any residential zone and then strike the rest of no construction and earth moving? And the rest of that for now, are we okay?
That talks about construction and earth moving equipment. And, you know, and then we can talk about heights and numbers and. You know, you've got the commercial vehicle definition, then the question is. How, what's the permissible number? What's the permissible height? What's the permissible weight?
Maybe I swipe in briefly. Um, I, I think the crux of the issue is, I believe it was council member Jacob said. What issues are we trying to solve? And I'm not sure that we are clear as a council on that question. So I would, what I would like to do is, and you may not like this. But what I'd like to see is, is Brock has, Brock is intimately aware. Of the issues that are taking place in our city. And if we had him say, okay, this has been an issue, this definition would, would solve it. This has been an issue, this definition would solve that. And, and, and then we could then move forward with. Clear definitions that would solve the issues, at least the issues. Clear definitions that would solve the issues, at least the issues at hand. Without trying to come up with resolutions ourselves that we really don't.
He brought for the definition to solve it, and now we're saying no.
No, now we're saying yes, but alter that.
Backing back out to the thirty thousand foot level again though. Is, are we going to really try and put everything in our code to prohibit something that somebody might not like?
Well, let's just take care of the issues at hand.
It's quality of life, right? I mean, I don't like that my neighbor has three dogs. Should I?
Wait till they get five and then they'll be in trouble.
Right, I know, that's what I'm saying, is we put these arbitrary things in there because somebody didn't like somebody else and it's arbitrary. And we're just catering to somebody who's a squeaky wheel and is complaining.
And that's why we have exceptions because squeaky wheel.
Exactly, and are we gonna keep doing that? I mean, we got the semi-truck. Tractor in here now, but somebody else is gonna come in and say, well, my trailer's not bugging anybody, should we write that in there? My podcast's not, you know, should we write that into the exceptions too? I mean. We're gonna, if we keep legislating to the individual and, and don't look at it as a holistic policy. What's right, what's wrong, and, and have some sort of principle guiding it. Then, then we're gonna keep doing this over and over and over again, it's gonna keep coming up, it's gonna be this issue, it's gonna be that issue, it's gonna be this kind of car, it's gonna be that kind of car. I don't like the logo that's on the side of that guy's F-150, well, the F-150 is allowed, yeah, but the logo, did you see that thing? It's obscene, you know, he runs a strip club out of his four by four, I don't know, whatever, you can just pay sure that. It can get ridiculous really fast. I'm not saying that that happens, I'm just saying that it could.
But it does.
So, so what the problem is, and is that problem something that's? Big enough to put a specific thing into code to deal with this big problem? And for me. There's a lot of things that my neighbors do that bug me. I deal with it because I'm an adult, I mean. We, we live with things because of the free country, and we realize that our, a free country has to allow for people to piss us off. So let me ask this question. Piggybacking on what he's talking about. The next section in thirteen eight fifteen talks about the storage of trash and debris. And it talks about abandoned or unused equipment, appliances, furniture.
Oh, we're gonna go to another?
That's almost a nuisance section, right?
I know, but then we're gonna go to the next one, or the next one?
Well, let, let me just point.
Yeah.
Alright.
The question would be. Is there a way? To not deal with the storage of commercial vehicles, but deal with. Commercial vehicles as a nuisance?
I mean, obviously you could. The problem. With nuisance regulations lots of times are. Lots of those are enforced by the neighbor themselves. Um, if there's a nuisance that's affecting their property, um, I think the way for the city.
That because that alleviates our responsibility to have to deal with the neighbor.
You're talking to the wrong person on this issue because. I don't believe in much zoning enforcement, I'm from Texas, Houston has no zoning, like, I am more with. I, you know, it, Councilmember Jacob's words. So you're talking to the wrong person on this issue. I would get rid of most of the code if it was me and myself. So that's, you, you know, you're talking to the wrong person on this, to be honest, um. I don't, that's not what I worry about. My job is when Brock tries to tell someone they can't do something. And they say, why not? I'm gonna sue you, or they do sue us, or they do do that. I want to have a definition that is clear on what they can and cannot do. And right now, we don't have that. And we are prohibiting what's in thirteen dash eight dash fourteen. Those are being prohibited today, and so I'm just asking. Let's at least define what we are prohibiting so that we can, you know, we can say, these are, you know, it's clear what we are prohibiting. Um. I do think the discussion as to all of these other issues needs to be had and accounted, the problem is, is that there's a lot of different opinions. A lot of people, a lot of people feel strongly, what should and shouldn't be prohibited, and that's been the reason why we haven't. Made any changes to the code yet. And so. Um. You know, for me, honestly, it's like, let's just delete the whole thing and not have it, I'm fine with that. Let's define what we are prohibiting, I'm fine with that. But if we're gonna. Go into the whole, let's, you know, let's figure out every single thing that we want to change and, and make that discussion happen. That, it seems like a simple discussion, but. There'll be a lot of different opinions and it'll take a long time. Um, to get people to agree on what should be prohibited or what shouldn't, but we do have. We do have items that are being prohibited today. And so if we want to go through and make a few changes, like have been discussed in this thirteen dash eight, eight dash eighteen. And then define those other items. I, I think that would be great, and if the further discussion wants to be, you know, we want to hash that out over time. Um, that would be great, but I, I would like to define what we do prohibit today if we could.
Well, at the, at the end of the day, what is, what is this con- this ambiguity that we have right now? What does it cost us? It's cost us this one lawsuit that.
Luckily, that lawsuit, she wasn't seeking any, she wa- she just wanted to keep her trailer.
Right.
So she wasn't seeking any type of damages for the, you know, for what she went through.
Did she sue us, or did we sue her?
So we didn't, no, we didn't sue anybody. What happened is we just did a code, code enforcement prevent, against her. She challenged it and she actually showed up to the hearing and had the hearing, she lost with her ALJ, and then she appealed that.
But she won at the third, at the circuit court.
At the district court, on the appeal, she won because of the definitions, and it seemed, you know, for. For Brock, him being in that situation.
Okay, so she didn't sue the city. She just appealed.
She appealed and won the appeal, and it was just, the loss on that one was time. No, and we didn't appeal.
Nothing it cost us was time.
It, it just cost us time, and then obviously upset neighbors that now. You know, oh, she gets to keep her semi-trailers, we're incompetent, we can't even enforce our own code that says you can't have commercial trailers. Well, it's. Because our code doesn't define what a commercial trailer is, but, um, so. So on that issue, it was just, you know, an issue of time for both parties. Um, she never, you know, she never had the trailers removed or anything at that, like that point, if we had done that, obviously. It probably would have ended up into a lawsuit, but, um, we've, we have another current one right now that's dealing with, you know, the dirt moving equipment. And it's just, these items aren't defined, it puts Brock in a difficult situation to know what it means and. Most people think dirt moving equipment means a backhoe. Okay, well, does it mean all backhoes, or is it only certain backhoes that are?
Again, and construction site or whatever.
Yeah, and so.
So, so is the, is, is the easy thing to do to just take out this prohibition? Because what, what would change? We've already got the six-person construction people. Doing what they're doing, people are mad about it, but they're doing it, and it's legally parked and, and, and it's okay. What, what would change? So, eh, the cynical part of me says. If you deleted this section of code completely, what would change is the number of people complaining that we're not enforcing this section of code.
I mean, it would, I mean, Brock could address, it would, there wouldn't be, obviously be large, you know, industrial and commercial. Construction equipment and things that people could have on their property.
But would they? Because right now, I'm thinking that if they wanted to, they'd probably be trying to get away with it already. Because what's gonna happen if they, if they're found in violation, they just gotta move it. And that's generally our code.
And then bring it back, move it, then bring it back, I mean, that does happen.
So, so what I'm saying is, there's not like a million people or a hundred thousand people in the city with, with tractors that they're just waiting to move in, but they can't. Because, you know, we have this prohibition in our thing, I think the ones that it affects. Are already affected. You know, the only people that I see that it becoming a problem with is somebody says, oh, I don't think that should be allowed, oh, but it is. You know, I, I, I don't see it, I, I see striking the whole section of code. Being a. A more, in my opinion, principally justifiable position. Than trying to find all the exact definitions and carve-outs and. What about this situation, that situation, how big? Fifteen thousand pounds or about fourteen thousand pounds, about twelve thousand pounds?
Then it's okay for them to drive those down our residential neighborhood streets and over our sidewalks and into their yards.
Is it okay for somebody to damage the sidewalk now? If I, if I go out to my sidewalk with a jackhammer and jack it all up, is that allowed? In other words, is it the truck that's the problem, or is it what it's doing is the problem?
I don't want huge vehicles going down our residential streets, they're not built for those vehicles.
Can we then, if that's, if, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna. If that's the purpose, if that's the purpose of this ordinance. Then why can't we just prohibit that? Why can't we just prohibit that these large vehicles can't drive down residential streets? And if they ended up in a backyard, they got there somehow. What's that? Well, I know, you definition of large vehicle, but you see where I'm going is. It, 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 it really does go back to what Councilmember Jacob said, what are we trying to accomplish?
Trying to accomplish that you cannot park a semi-trailer in your backyard. That's all I've seen from this discussion today. Okay, on the street too, but the problem is, somebody has a, uh, somebody has a big trailer parked in the backyard. And the neighbor doesn't like it, like Zach said, and so he complained. So do we want to solve it, or do we just want to let people put those in their backyard?
Well, again, the only complaint because it said he's not supposed to have it, this person.
No, I, I believe the person didn't get in city code and go. In city code, I think he looked out in his backyard. And he, and he said, I don't want the city, I don't want that in my backyard.
Right, but if Brock, they don't have them said, that's actually allowed. What is? The courts have now said.
Right, it is allowed. So do we, do we want to not allow it? That's our, that's the question.
Well, and that goes back to the question about height. Is, is, was the trailer because it was a trailer, or was it because it was earlier than hence?
Because the neighbor can see it and he doesn't want to see it.
Yeah.
I'd be really interested in knowing what the mayor and. Because they're the ones that deal with this every day. Is it going, I don't want us to take something out that has a negative consequence. Because I don't want it to turn into that every residential area ends up having. Backhoes stored in their backyard because we didn't say they can't. You say they won't, but.
Are you gonna have a backhoe in your backyard if it's allowed? Are you just gonna go buy one and put it in your backyard?
I can't afford one.
Would you?
But if I could afford one, will you really?
Sure.
Then I will, because that would be really fun to use, and my grandsons would love it.
And the only reason that you can't, that you're not doing it is because it's not allowed.
No, I just said I can't afford it.
I, I don't know what.
But I'd really like to know these two.
I got two questions today on the phone, people looking at my properties, and they said. I have an excavation company, can I park my backhoe in the backyard? Well, no, commercial vehicles aren't allowed, that was two calls today though.
And that's what my concern is, is what, it, it's the vision, what do we want our city to be? Do we care about those kind of things, or do we not? I care about them.
Are there a lot of people that call and complain about that? No, but those that do are very upset because they. Feel like the city is letting them down, we don't solve that problem.
We don't stop every little thing that happens.
Yeah, well, the question, the, part of the question is, what's the responsibility of the city here?
Right.
Right, and that's really hard when you have that conversation. Well, you think that's okay? What am I, well, no, I don't think it's okay, then why you do something about it?
What are you feeling this? Your neighbor doesn't think it's okay.
Well, they, they get almost to the point where they physically hurt each other, they, it usually gets to that point by time.
In that case, we call the chief and, or call the police department.
They're a criminal or civil issue.
Well, that's another question, is this a criminal or civil? This is a civil.
Mr. Hudson, do you have anything to add?
We do get. I, I don't know what the mayor receives, we do get quite a few phone calls about people with backhoes or dump trucks or. The guy's got, we had one gentleman store about seven trailers that he was renting out, people coming and picking them up. So we do get a few calls on it. Um. You know, the number of people that call and complain compared to those that affects is almost a one for one, I mean. So.
How many, how many calls do you get, people complaining about things that aren't illegal?
Say probably about twenty percent of our calls, twenty-five percent of our calls.
Who are complaining about things that?
We tell them, sorry, but that's not against city ordinance, so there's really nothing we can do about that.
We need to look at twenty-five percent of code enforcement's calls because people are complaining about it and see what else we need to prohibit?
Well, it's just like the parking one. I get a lot of calls on those with the parking is, you know, they don't like parking in front of their house.
Yeah, I get, I get that a lot, actually. Somebody pointed out. People park on the street, the people don't like it, park it back out of my driveway, you have it illegally parked.
Do you know it's like to back my fifth-wheel trailer into my yard with it parked, parked across?
Right, exactly, you know, I can't get my semi-truck and trailer outside of my backyard because of the way they're parked. You know, I mean.
I, I think the question is, where do we want to put that line? There, there has to be a line somewhere, where is that line? Anywhere you put it is arbitrary.
Me, though, I like weight because that weight does have. The thing to damage. A city, and I think it at least puts a, some sort of line in the sand.
I, I agree with the exception that if a guy's renting a rental out of his backyard. With seven trailers, those tr- those trailers. So. Maybe there needs to be, like I said, a number or a cumulative type thing as well.
Like the cats and dogs. That's, that's also addressed by, by, uh, business licensing, right? So, could we just use that mode? But it was like, with, with business license, you have to only have one.
Well, and we're gonna take, we're gonna take a look at the home-based business license anyway.
We haven't looked at.
And we, and we've talked about that because it says that you can't, you know, that. That, that, there, there's actually some contradictory sections there about what you can have and what you can't have, and a couple other things. May, so the, the real question. I, I'm part of the other question is, it, it almost sounds. As if some of the problem. Is because people are running. Businesses out of their house and they're using their. Land as a storage lot. If that's the case, then that should be addressed as a business license issue.
And we do, and that's how we approach those, is they're violating their home occupation standards for their business license.
And that's how we did this other one that she was talking about, however, if they would come back and say. Those. Trainers are not for my business, they're for my own personal thing, then what do we do?
Yes, we do that as well.
Well, and, and if it's. If it's weight. Or cumulative number.
We also look at how they're registered, could you, if, if they claim it's for personal use, but it's registered to their business?
Yeah, people register their own vehicles to their, the sole proprietorship sometimes, so. I, I'm just, I'm just thinking more. I, I'm just wondering if you brought back to the definitions. Um. Maybe, maybe under the definition. Um. You know, you, you talked about horsepower. Um, maybe that works, but it, it sounds like a lot of this is based on sheer numbers. And, and so to me, maybe there needs to be a number limit. And a number limit, height limit, horsepower limit, weight limit, if you had those, we would address. Probably ninety-five, we would address the commercial trailers, you'd. Address the great big dump trucks, but the person could still have a bobcat on a trailer in their backyard. I'm not gonna lose any sleep over this one way or the other, whatever we do. I just, I just know that we're just gonna have to do it again, when somebody else complains about something else, we're just gonna have to do it again. And, and there's always gonna be a what about case, that we're gonna lose in court because you didn't think of that in the definition. It's just gonna come up.
So I'm gonna come back to the question at hand, should we allow semi-trailers to be parked in backyards? Even though there's just one issue here, I don't know how often it comes up, but it might come up again.
That might be easier, just write semi-trailers in here and, and the section of code.
But then if we do that, how do we define?
Semi-trailers?
How do they box? Is that forty-foot Comex box in their backyard, the same as the same?
Is that forty foot Comax box in their backyard the same as the semi trailer?
Shipping container.
My neighbor has a shipping container. High up, it's low down to the fence.
So if the shipping container was on a trailer.
And it'd be high up, it'd be different.
Yeah, I mean, he's got a valid point. How do shipping, how are shipping containers considered in, under code?
Most people have them. But nobody complains about them.
It's not defined.
Oh, yes, they do.
About shipping containers? So why don't you do, listen to parking complaints and shipping containers all day?
I just listen to people, residents every day, all day long, yes. Those kind of things, we probably need to also deal with something like shipping container, because it's not just, it's just a damn shed. Right? Metal storage shed.
Does not meet the building code as a structure, so it can be governed by a structure, exterior accessory. Cause it does not meet the code.
Have to be the, meet the code of a building or a structure to have a shed in your backyard.
All right, let's not get into.
Something, I'm. My tenure, I've been through this conversation three times and each time. In, in this city, yeah, in West Jordan, I've been through this conversation three times. And each time we kind of get to this deadlock about, um, principle, desired aesthetics. Desired vision for the city, difficulty to fa, to define. And we're trying to weigh the opinions of seven different council members on this issue. Can I propose, we as staff, I'm, I'm gonna lean on the attorneys and Scott and Brock. I'd like to give the seven of you a survey. This is gonna be a survey that's gonna include actually a lot of visuals. Because I think a lot of this is about the visual aesthetics versus the, um. What, what, what do I think most neighbors would find objectionable or not? And, and ask you, okay, do you want to regulate this? Yes or no? In front yards or backyards? Yes or no? What about this quantity? Yes or no? Size, height? Yes or no? And give you visual examples. So we can then see where do the majority of you land? On the wide variety of instances that code enforcement deals with. And then can we, and then once we have that, we can share those results back with you. And say, okay, can we craft code and definitions around?
I like that.
Part of you are landing on this issue.
I like that idea.
Okay.
I like that idea. I, I find when we have a disparity of opinions, is that a word, disparity? Of opinions like, like we do here, we're kind of all landing in, on the same spot, different ways and different spots, other ways and, and different things. Those, uh, those little polls that we do, you know, the little, um. The slideos, yeah, is what we do now, but you know, before. Those kind of things really kind of help us to, to come to a consensus. We don't all agree, right? You've got seven different choices, but you can see the majority is landing here and we all kind of go, oh, well, that's where the majority landed. Okay, let's go on to the next thing.
Know what to do.
I listen. I have a great idea.
I like to respond sometimes.
But that is the end of the decor, but I think you're right. It's what we, what, what are we trying to get at? And most of this is visual. And I, and I think a lot of the times, your complainers that are calling in and complaining, once you explain to them. A rationale, especially for that twenty-five percent, right, that, that's actually not illegal. Once you explain to them, well, look, if we made that illegal, look at your house. Now all of a sudden, this is, I got this in my HOA, right? I put up a campaign sign in my yard in my HOA. And the HOA came around and said, you can't have that in your yard. I said, why? They said, look at the rule right here, it says no signs. I said, well, that guy's got a little vivid sign in his garden bed. That's not allowed either. Now, what about this one over here? And when I had an HOA president, he was smart and said, you really want to allow all these signs? You really want to enforce this? Everybody went, oh, well, maybe I don't. Cause that happens, right? You, you have these, uh, you have these unintended consequences, like, yeah, get rid of that shipping container. Well, okay, you got a garden shed that falls under the same code. You sure you want to start pushing this button? You know, and, and people start going, oh, well, maybe I can overlay that because that, that freedom. Sorry for getting all red, white, blue on us. That freedom that allows them to tick me off is also allowing me to do this and this and this.
Don't take my she shed.
She shed, my man cave. See, I think man cave more in basements because they're a cave. She sheds are outdoors, that's not, that shouldn't be allowed.
So do you have what you propose to?
I think so.
Do some things?
What we don't want to do is it took you four years to help one thing. Years from later, we now have to try to help the second thing. Let's figure out.
And I should apologize. I think it's the first time I've been before the new council, the new council member, so I didn't introduce myself. For the new council members. I am Paul Dodd, I'm in the city attorney's office. I normally do the civil litigation, so you know, that's the reason why this issue came to me, just because they pulled it to district court and. So that's normally what I do and that's kind of how I got in on it. I mean, I guess the, the main issue and it's kind of. If you don't end up doing anything about this, it's not the end of the world. It just means I tell Brock, I don't think we should enforce any of those because we're not defining it clearly. And I mean, that's fine, but I don't know if that's what the council wants, you know?
And that's how he doesn't enforce it then when they.
Yeah, cause I mean, I think Brock and a lot of these issues when they come up is, well. They don't enforce this when it's not defined, we'll probably lose, so my advice would be don't enforce it until we get it done.
Like not enforcing things on the.
Yeah, all right.
Force is still dead.
I like, I like the direction though. I like, I like. Corbin, you're right, hurting cats, you're a lot better than I am. Appreciate that. So, so thanks. Are you gonna talk to us about the station area plans?
Yeah, they're like, yes.
A little bit, but mostly listened.
That's good, because we're gonna talk in, we're not so good at listening sometimes.
Thanks, Paul.
Alan's not here, can you pull?
Oh, it's coming right back. He just grabbed me an extension cord so that I don't. Did you see my summary of every Facebook post about politics? I can't believe that person on the other side of the aisle said.
It looks good.
How can anybody?
Everybody go.
Now I'm listening.
He's scurrying out here.
Yes, Jacob, let him just go on.
We want to talk about fifty-six hundred west being on highway because we're just starting, uh, kicking this project off. Um, we learned some things after doing our three station plan, which I think was a successful plan, but, um. We do any planning process, you learn some things. And so, uh, the first thing we learned from that process was. Council wanted us to be bold. And so taking a look at that, we actually looked at the RFP we did in our first contract that we signed. With WFRC for fifty-six hundred west and we said, we're not being that bold. So we asked them to revise that scope. They did. It increased the cost of the plan by twenty-two thousand dollars and WFRC said, we'll fund that, so we didn't even have to ask for it. So we got, uh, that funding bumped up from fifty thousand to now seventy-two thousand dollars, what we've received for this. So, um, I think it's a testament to our partners really appreciating how serious we've been on this and how forward they've been. Um, but also we heard that, uh, council didn't potentially have as much impact. Or feedback on the three station plan as some of the council members wanted to, so we wanted to make sure we were finding that and giving everybody, uh. An opportunity to participate early and often into this process so that everyone on the council feels like they are heard and leading forward. So that's why, um, bring this kind of forward tonight as we get this project off. Trail is unfamiliar, fifty-six hundred west, Old Bingham Highway, it's, uh, fifty-six hundred west, North Bingham Highway.
Where's that at exactly?
Corner of the city.
Is it fifty-six hundred west?
Yeah.
Okay.
Was that blue line the city border?
The blue line is the city border, so.
Well, they stole from us for South Jordan for.
Honestly, we need to work with South Jordan in creating this plan as well, right?
We, we've actually asked them and South Jordan said, they're not interested. They've got plans for Daybreak. Uh, for us to go ahead and do what we want with a stationary plan.
I might have put a compost station right.
I've got the, the question. Our circle, the light blue circle. Or the circle of life, whatever you want to call that. Three quarters of the circles in West Jordan, the other part is not. So if we write, so do we, are we going to write for the entire circle in?
Well, uh, I, I think traditionally is what we would do, something like this is we'll plan for what we do in West Jordan. And we're not going to take complaints from South Jordan when they say, oh, we don't like that you're doing that on our border. We could say, well, you guys should have participated in the planning of this border area. Yeah, so we, they decline.
Isn't the state requiring them to, to?
They will have to, they will have to either submit a plan or ask for an exception, but that's totally in their court. We, we really wanted them to participate because, you know, that's a good way to next.
Any of those parcels already committed to something? That are in our city?
As far as what they're committed to, I mean, we'll kind of talk about what's existing on the ground. I'm not sure if I understand the question.
Where, go back to.
He's gonna present the plan.
Okay. Where there's raw land.
Yeah, we're not to the plan, yeah.
Yeah, so, you know, the raw land, I mean, we'll see the Grandview Avenue, Granville Avenue is planned on coming in here. So we'll show you where that's going to be, but, uh, you know.
But like, yeah, I think it might be helpful, though. Go back real quick, just to provide context. The upper left is SME Steel.
And there's a slide about that. This is just the bigger grounds. This is where we can see kind of built environment of the area. You see, not very many buildings or structures in there. It's, um. It's not virgin land, but it's a lot of open land. There's not a lot of. Uh, so here we have some views, so you can see on the, the top UA. Uh, and then on the right, you can see where that UA, uh, view is, so that's the.
So, so really what we're saying is, is that this part of the stationary area plan is the, the ultimate goal is to. Is to figure out how to make the power, power lines prettier. Yes, that's the question. Never mind.
I, I mean, I think the, the built environment will become an important question for us to ask here. Uh, and then B, we can see that's looking from Daybreak towards, uh, fifty-six hundred west station. So we can kind of see, uh, the environment's open, lots of power lines, uh, the roads, you'll see they're, they're narrow. There, there's no sidewalks, there's no curb and gutter, uh, they're kind of broken up. This isn't what we typically describe as like a so warm, fuzzy, inviting environment at this time. It's really industrial in nature.
Now, those rodents that live out there would just.
Those rodents, very warm.
They don't know, so it's okay. So we did a swap for this, um, strange that we identified to say is it's got great transportation connections. Mountain corridor, Old Bingham Highway, Granville Avenue and traps. Um, when the new track station in South Jordan comes on, there'll be three track stations within a mile of this, uh, location. There's a very small number of property owners here with very large parcels. Bingham Creek Regional Park just opened up adjacent to Interstate Brick. Uh, we're adjacent to Daybreak, which has a lot of master planning in this area, especially for their calling it downtown Daybreak. It's just under one point five miles to the new B stadium. And we have the New Orleans Employment Center on the other side of Mountain Court or Boeing and stuff is, that's about a mile away. So there's a lot of activity near this node, but not really at this node. Weaknesses, I think we've seen large power lines, the sidewalks for walkability, it's not vibrant, character is not, uh, inviting. We have limited utility capacity, uh, particularly sewer in this location. And because of kind of the infrastructure and the, uh, businesses that have been there, they're large scale businesses. Any new vision, if that's the way we decided to go, would potentially take a long time to implement. Opportunities is, uh.
Taylor, under weaknesses you left off, there's no bike lanes on.
That's right. Doesn't stop me from riding my bike on.
Yeah, there's basically no shoulder on newbie.
Uh, opportunities though, this actually presents a lot of, when we look at it, uh, huge redevelopment potential. Um, we're adjacent to South Jordan where they have some really cool things going on. Uh, there's a small number of stakeholders and there's few if any residents in West Jordan, which means it's gonna be easier to build consensus. Cause we're building it with two or three groups, uh, or people rather than five thousand citizens. Um, there's opportunity to create a gateway for West Jordan. Alternatively, we, you know, remain, we already have the industrial center as we currently planned it. Threats is, you know, if we don't do anything, theory doesn't change, it remains inflated. Uh, if we decide that we want to do something in the future, so it's gonna be a long-term process, we're just not farther behind the people. And, uh, right now, there's a lot of activity going on there and we can capitalize on those, uh, opportunities now. But if we, you know, pull off, we don't do anything, we might lose access to some of the synergy and the exciting, uh, activities happening in the area. So here you can see, um, the location there is with the blue bubble. That's where we're at, next to Interstate Brick. SME still just on the side of New Bingham Highway. The yellow line is the rough location where Granville Avenue is going to end. We can see the, the red tracks line, the other blue bubble up there, that's, uh, the B stadium, that's currently under construction.
And that B stadium will have a track station.
It will, yeah. Here's looking at another one, that, uh, Bingham Creek Regional Park, which is a fantastic regional park that Salt Lake County and South Jordan partnered on. Is just outside of this, uh, across from the state still, or no, it's a brick. And then moving forward, that downtown Daybreak, uh, location we talked about. So there's a future track station there. There's a track station to the north. Megaplex being planned there, office, retail, there's a.
This is why Miller is putting a megaplex in.
Close the other one down.
Just because they own it.
They're gonna close the other one down. The district. Eventually.
So, uh, what's in this plan, which is, uh, about a mile away from us, uh, seventy-five thousand square feet of retail food. Three hundred plus residential units. Uh, there's light rail, parks, um, and a hundred thousand square feet of office. There's also house door. So Daybreak and South Jordan are putting all of this money in this investment area right here. And we looked at it as, maybe we should try to capitalize on some of their investment rather than just put more warehouse. That's kind of why we asked for more money from WFRC and that's what we're here to ask you tonight. Is it, you're okay with that vision if you're on board? So with that, you know, I, I've talked a lot and, uh, really I want to hear what the council would like to do. Would you like to be involved? How bold do you think we should be? What, what vision do you want to see? And what does a successful plan look like that we can set on those for?
We just feed tax dollars into South Jordan if we.
Can you run it back to where we're seeing the bubble with the?
With all the, with all the retail.
They go back.
I, I think a good question that Taylor wants to have here from the council is. Do we want that to be, continue to be industrial on the front end or do we need what to make it more to take? And take advantage of what's happening in South Jordan, the ballpark and the other things and incorporate that more into here. How much that do we want to?
Taylor, do we know what South Jordan's doing with that part of their bubble? Is that housing or do we know?
Um, don't know that exactly. It's colored like a red on the Daybreak master plan. It says Daybreak Downtown, which is an excuse. So it could be office, it could be commercial, it could be residential. Likely it's probably.
So when you, when you express to us, do we want to do something cool? What, what is cool?
Yeah, I'm asking us.
No, but he's like, do you want to do something?
So what we had planned originally. When we first asked for money was, this is just going to be an industrial area. We're gonna export some industrial from other parts of the city and we'll just dump it here. This is just going to be an industrial area. We're gonna export some industrial from other parts of the city and we'll just dump it here and it'll kind of remain that it is. And seeing everything that's happening with, and hearing from the council on the three station plan that you wanted to see something cool. We're coming here tonight saying, what do you wanna see that's cool place?
So you're, you're looking for a high level.
Yeah, we haven't started.
Explain, explain the process though. This is refreshing because this is, there's, there's more, more to come that you will get into the details, right?
Yeah, and we haven't held the kickoff with our consultant. We're, we're starting that next week. We wanted to hear from the council on. What types of things you wanted to see, how involved you wanted to be, what a successful plan looks like. It's going to give, we want hopefully everyone to vote for this one.
So, uh, just my, my initial thoughts and Dirk and I talked here and I talked about this, uh, last week a little bit. Um, this is the last track station before the ballpark. Okay, the ballpark, triple A baseball has a hundred and fifty games a year, seventy-five home games a year. If we don't give somebody a reason to get off the train at this stop before the game, we missed an opportunity.
I wanna pro a vision bar.
Speak easy? Um, so I think, I think some of the things, that, that's something to think about, right?
How about Texas Roadhouse?
Well, I do. But if you want people to get off the train. They're going to a ballpark.
So, it's gonna be really easy. It's gonna be really easy to look at this and go, oh, well, it's SME Steel and it's Interstate Brick. Those are two of the biggest employers in the city. We don't wanna upset them. We don't wanna rock the apple cart and we get, we're gonna get stuck on what is there and forget about what we want to be there. And I think we, we can deal with. SME Steel and Interstate Brick's reactions if we put some big, cool, mixed-use. Vibrant kind of plan in place, we can work with them on. What that means for them, right? We can have those discussions down the line as far as. What does that mean for relocating those businesses or how do we put them into an RDA so that we can help them with some, who, who knows, right? There's options. That's why I'm saying there's, there, there will be tools down the line to have those discussions. But if we, if we are, if we narrow our vision because those discussions would have to be made. Then we're doing ourselves a disservice. I think this, this probably, part of what got us hung up in the city centers, we think, oh, what's there? We're gonna have to talk to all these businesses about moving. Okay, but let's, let's talk about what we would want to be there in an ideal world. And then, and then we can work backwards from that. Does that make sense? And I'm not, I know, I don't want, you know, to create a new downtown West Jordan or to cannibalize anything necessarily. But let's, let's, what can we do at the last stop before the ball stadium? And get somebody to get on the train an hour earlier and get off in West Jordan before they go to the game. Or to downtown Daybreak for anything else. I mean, if they're gonna work there, there's gonna be office there, whatever.
Yeah, and so some of the initial thoughts that we had as well is that regional park. We, we couldn't afford to go build a park like that in probably the next twenty years if we wanted to. It's a crazy, expensive grid amenity that we're, we've got next to a brick plant. So if we're thinking thirty years in the future, what do we want next to that? Like, how do we wanna redevelop this area? Because I think we are talking about redevelopment here. I don't think I'm stepping out to say. We're hoping that that's what we hear from the council is we wanna have some big vision for this area. We wanna make sure that the council's on board with that because we talked about, you know, utility issues and it, it might require massive sewer upgrades, but.
We can't get rid of SME Steel. We can't get rid of Interstate Brick, can we? I mean, can't ask them just to leave.
Well, we're gonna with them and that's part of it. Like, we have three or four property in this here, but they're two of the big ones, but we're not gonna say. Pack up, you know, the city, but we're saying, what vision does the council have to go and approach them and partner with them and say. Let's find a way to communitize and capitalize your investment you made here thirty, forty, fifty years ago. Move it somewhere where land values aren't as much, where you're going to be able to make a massive payday on this.
Right. That's, that's exactly, that's, that's what I was talking about with the downtown area too. If you put the plan in place and you say, we're gonna build something really cool right here, whatever that is, you know, lagoon, whatever. You're gonna build something really cool right here. Seriously, right? As, you know, the, the developers or the people that build those things that, that we say we want right here are gonna come in and go, what's it gonna take to make that happen? And they'll make SME an offer they can't refuse. They'll make Interstate an offer they can't refuse. And they'll say, we want your land. We'll help you move. We'll help you relocate. We'll get you something better. We'll pay you, you know, whatever it is. As we zone it, as we put the plans in place, the future land use map, the zoning, the, the site, not necessarily a site plan, but the, the concept plans. Though, we take those steps, the value of that land increases. And all of a sudden SME's going, we don't just have a steel business here. We have a steel business that's sitting on land that we could sell and make a ton of money. Because the city has gone through these steps of entitling it, of doing all these things to, to put the ball in motion toward what we want to have happen.
Hey, I second Sax. I want the amusement park.
This area would be good for Legionator Art, kinda thing that I've talked about. This would be something that people would stop at for a while. And go to the container park before they went down to the, uh, to the baseball game. And it would be something that would be very unique and kind of vibrant and it would be the kind of thing that people would stop on the way home at. Because it would be this kind of thing, it would have, you know, the bar kind of activity you're talking about. It would have, you know, this kind of fun, vibrant thing.
It gets out at nine-thirty, man. What are you gonna do?
It had, but, but the bottom line is, is that. Somewhere in this vision. It's got to be different than.
And daybreak.
What?
The daybreak.
The miners are putting in.
Yeah.
At Daybreak with their entertainment slash amphitheater slash seventy-five thousand square foot of retail and restaurant.
It's not that much, actually. Seventy-five thousand square feet. When you think about it, the store, you, you don't remember my hot tub store? It was twelve thousand square feet. Five of those, six of those is seventy-five thousand square feet. The, the shopping center on Seventieth and, and Redwood is seventy-five thousand square feet or more. Probably more with Lucky and the old Target.
But what the miners are trying to do is build that kind of a complex that when you go to the baseball game.
You're gonna wanna stay.
You're gonna stay, either you're gonna stay after the game or come before the game. And so we've gotta figure out how to compete.
How to one-up that.
How to one-up that.
Yeah.
And that may not be easy.
To compete, I think it's to.
Yeah.
So I guess what we're interested in is, you know, are we okay with, I guess, the residential? Are we okay with?
No, no.
Yes.
Well, here's what I have some, in regards to that, I'd like to speak to that briefly. Um, we went out to Alliant Energy Groundbreaking and we spoke with, um. The Kurt at, uh, he's the, uh, the CEO of SME Steel. And what did he talk about was his number one need? Employees. And if there was, if there was workforce housing in this area. We've got Boeing, we've got Amazon, we've got SME Steel, we've got Interstate. These big, all these big employers, they want a place for their employees to live that's convenient. And I, as much as I don't like high density housing, I feel like this would be a, a valuable place.
Taylor, what are you looking for from the city council tonight? This is just the introduction of the process, right? What do you need from the council?
What's up with from the council tonight? That's a good question is.
That's not.
How do you wanna be involved? Cause I, I, last time we did the committee and I thought like, the committee wasn't loved by everybody. Some people felt like. They only had a chance to really see it one or two times before we voted on it and they weren't able to properly. Uh, participate. So we'll see how the council wants to be involved. What a successful planning process looks like. Uh, we can work through what the outcomes of that are. I guess the third thing is, are you okay with us embracing a big vision, changing from industrial land use? Which is what it's currently, uh, future land use planned as to something different, probably more dense.
I'm definitely okay with changing the future land use designations from staying industrial. Absolutely, positively. I think it's necessary. I think I said, this is a once. You, you can always go back, right? Like, how many times does, does the developer remember? Well, we tried zoning it commercial, it didn't work, so we're gonna come back to you and ask for residential instead. You can always go back. If, if we zone and future land use map and plan for something big and awesome and cool, whatever that is. And it doesn't pan out, you can always go back. We don't, you don't lose anything. And you don't lose much, right? You, you lose ten years of having, you know, a, a manufacturing plant of some kind right there.
So do you wanna appoint a subcommittee like Calvin Kayla, the neighbor pack, serve on?
Hope it's one of your own set.
How long of a process is it?
This one's gonna be, uh, more rapid. We're, we're looking at six months on this one. And the reason is, is our public engagement is going to be different because there's no residents of West Jordan inside this. So we're looking at going to business owners.
Honey's house in that circle?
It is, but she lives in South Jordan, so.
I was gonna say, it's really close. If it's not, I can't quite tell. I don't know exactly where it is, but I know.
Yeah.
That, well, I can see the.
The, the one thing that I, I wanna make sure of is that. This vision ties with the Southwest quadrant vision. I think that.
How so?
Well.
What is the Southwest quadrant is?
The, the Southwest quadrant vision is to support. To be that, that support between the inland port and pointed the mountain, right? That was part of it is, a- and so. How, how does this? Become part of that vibrant Southwest quadrant that supports the other initiatives? I don't know the answer to that right now, but I don't wanna lose. I don't wanna lose the Southwest quadrant type initiative. And, and, and what I don't wanna, what I don't wanna do is just say, well. Our vision is to have a bunch of high density housing because that's, you know, and, and, and you're right, we, we need. Workforce housing, but you know, is that, you know. A thousand units in there at this.
Hate to see is like just a sea of high density housing, just thrown in everything, crown it with nothing else. That's what I would hate.
And, and, and we can't, because the fact of the matter is. I, if, if you look at this area, except for over on Country Road and. Or whatever that is, that, that, that neighborhood over there, um, in the, in the upper right-hand corner. The fact of the matter is, is that, that's, and here's, here's the problem that, the problem set that I see. If we put people here. They're not gonna do business in West Jordan.
No. They're all going to.
They're all going to South.
They're gonna just rebuild something better.
Right, we gotta figure that out. That's what we gotta figure out.
But, but, but that, there's not enough land there to.
What ever happened to those surf park guys that wanna build that surf park?
They wanted our money to build it.
They wanted apartment complexes.
They wanted a bunch of high density housing.
Putting some of those in here anyway. Something like that.
We gotta figure out something that's gonna increase the value enough that it would incent. Some of these, uh, large landowners to sell their property so we could increase, so we could redevelop and not just.
About that as a long-term goal too, right? Can, and, and that's not a, that's not gonna happen. That's not gonna happen just because we put the plan in place. That's gonna happen down the road as the development starts.
Property will increase in value as we do the right things.
And it'll start when the vacant lands that are there, so there's that trap as well, the one that, um, Savage Rail was looking at many years ago. They didn't end up even, there's that one and then there's the one, the triangle piece makes the interstate break there. That are kind of the two open lands. It'd be really easy to have somebody come in and say, here's what I wanna do on those as part of this bigger vision. And as that goes in, as that happens and we see SME and, and Interstate start to see. That vision be realized, then their values will go up and the, the light bulbs will, you know, at least that's the way I see it now.
At the end of, at the end of the day though, here's, here's. The, the, whatever goes in there. The, the fact of the matter is. And, and, and I, I know where the legislature wants to go. Station area, station, station should be high density people. The problem is, is that where are the nearest services for any resident in that, in that area? It's, they're, they're either down at Anth- at Anthem, um, or Smas. You know, it's either down at, at, you know, Anthem Village. It's either Smas or Anthem Village. Because they'll go south instead of going north to seventy-eight. And there's nothing else. And, and so, anything that's gonna be a residential component there. All it's gonna do is that, I'm gonna, I'll say this, it's gonna add to the grid lock that the stationary plans are supposed to unlock. Because everybody's gonna wanna have a car because they can't get it anywhere from there.
Everybody doesn't. I don't disagree, but I don't want that to be a hang up as to, to having a big vision either.
Taylor, are you not going to have any public open houses?
We're planning on them.
Charettes.
I, I think that's a mistake. I think we should hear from the public too.
But nobody lives in that area.
By the way, well, Chuck and Tommy.
Yeah, they don't live right there, but they live in the city.
I, I, that, that's, we can.
It can, it can be something as simple as public input through a survey monkey with you, give them a few choices.
Yeah, and we could do something like that. We were looking at a online only engagement for the public. And we were really going to gear engagement. And we can change this, obviously we haven't started yet, but it was going to be towards those. Large property owners and we said we could create consensus among the few people that own all the property. Rather than bringing people who are outside of it, but.
Yeah, I'm really, I'm, I'm really interested to see what the people who own the vacant pieces would, would be okay with.
Interstate Brick on that triangle.
And then SME still owns the other portion, right?
We see a little like, I don't know who the, the owner is now.
I, I forget his name. We've had contacts with him.
What's the parking, what's that parking lot? Is that part of the, the park?
Tracks. Well, that's the tracks.
Which.
And UTA is gonna be willing to give up and some of that.
They're really willing to give up most of it, um. You know, actually, when we approached them with this plan, they said this station was on their list to be closed because it's not used. So.
Nobody uses it right now because they're not there, right?
Yeah, because, because nobody rides out there because they, they can't get there to work and they don't live out there.
Yeah, so, so UTA is all for redeveloping this parking lot. They own, uh, property to the south of it as well and to the east west, so.
That track station is the closest track station to our industrial areas, right? And it would use more as a way to get that track station to their work over there.
Yep, if there was a safe locking route or bike riding route or.
Or a bus.
And, and the other thing that we also want to make sure the council is aware of as well is. The second phase of Mountain View Corridor, which we're probably going to see the state start relatively soon, requires fast bus. Down fifty-six-hundred, which they used to be BRT, but it's now fast bus for some other reasons. But this would be a terminus for that. So this would be a true multi-modal station where you're gonna have. Basically a highway or a freeway, uh, for Mountain View Corridors trending towards a track line and a fast bus BRT. So this area would have a number of those things.
And just up is the express bus. Just north of this too on fifty-six.
Fifty-six.
Ninetieth is where the city owns that big chunk.
Jug onto Mountain View Corridor for a second.
Where some, we're, we wanna look at services and keep them in West Jordan. The city, we're already in the driver's seat for that. Right? There's an RDA, it's RDA, right? And it's in the IOZ and there's. But yeah, just up the street there, Winco was looking at it on.
So Taylor, I'm, I'm still a little, what, what do you need from the city council this evening?
Yeah, so how they wanna be involved? I've heard we want more public engagement than we're planning for, so I can make sure we address that.
We're planning for none, and I'd like some.
How many do we do with the three, the three, all three public engagements?
Um, so we had two surveys, a planning charette, open house. Um, so we had two surveys, a planning charrette, open house. And then public hearings.
Ain't just an open house and you're good. You know, and a, a well-publicized open house, maybe a survey. And I think.
Open house where and who's gonna go?
Next to the Great Cone.
Oh, see, the mayor will go because he lives close to this. I'm looking, I'm looking at this and thinking that.
Go to.
This will go along. The, the western periphery of that circle is Oracle, isn't it? Isn't that building that just on outside the circle in that Oracle?
Sure.
Which one?
We. The, the white building just outside.
Uh, that's Oracle.
That's Oracle. Yes, I. I, I think we need, I, I. The stationary area plan's got, uh. I know it's got a defined limit. But I'm wondering, can we stretch that defined limit a little bit and it helped? At least get some good input and work with Oracle and. Aligned Energy, I mean, aligned energy is just west of there, right? Um, and, and Boyer's got that great big new building. Just west of, isn't that the new Boyer building on the edge of the picture, Taylor? Is that, and then there's Boyer in there. This one right here. I, I think we ought to include Bo- Boyer and, and Boeing and Oracle in this just to. At least with some involvement to, to get an idea of what. They might wanna see as a vision for this too, is otherwise.
Well, again, we tell them, you know, if this becomes big and valuable, what's gonna happen to your property value? What's gonna happen to the value where you are now and this.
Are there limits though with the funding that we've received in W F R C? As far as how far out we go with scope?
Well, I think our plan can only be by the legislation to have my own.
Sure, that's what we're required to do.
I, I don't disagree, but I'm just wondering.
I think we can. Look further. I don't know that we have the funding in the. The current scope to do a whole lot of intensive planning out there. And I guess. I'd be interested in. If we're going there, are we looking at redeveloping those properties? Are we looking at connecting those into the station like?
And I'm not, I'm just talking about soliciting.
I'm talking about soliciting.
Planning about.
I, I'm not talking about planning outside the circle, but you know, Boeing and Boyer and, and Oracle and those companies in there. May have some really good ideas about what they'd wanna see on the corner. That would help their businesses become better.
Maverick.
A maverick.
We need a maverick.
Come and go.
Okay, so, so what are we, what do we have consensus? Some additional input? From, from the community, larger input from the community, larger than the circle. What else?
Yeah, um.
Is there?
Is, I, I was thinking if it's, if you can really put it together in six months, then I, I was thinking, you know, like. Couple of committee, the whole discussions.
Indeed. So if, if it's committee of the whole, that, that would mean that we come back to this body, not have a subcommittee.
Right.
Like you did with the other three.
I think that's, that's better.
So can, do we have those three, any others?
Comes out, we'll, we can.
I feel like a subcommittee could spend more time and get into more of the weeds.
Because it's a, that's a feature handbook.
Is that a, is that a valuable thing or not valuable?
It caused issues last time for Taylor and his group, so I would say just go with.
It's more of a keep, keep.
You have a table, go.
And I guess, you know, if, if anybody wants to take an a- a more active role in it, just communicate with the staff and.
Yeah, I would.
Say, hey, where are you? You know, give me, send me the, send me the latest update, just whatever you got, you know? That kind of a thing and.
I mean, we'll, we'll likely have a weekly updates. I mean, I can share those with you as well after.
Yes, excellent. More communication is always good.
And then like Alan, are we okay to then? Reach out to Taylor with thoughts and ideas and stuff like that or?
I would reach out to the.
Oh, mayor for mayor. Okay. That's, I just wanted to make sure that.
But Taylor, are we not, eh, in my mind, we have to have a fair amount of high density housing. Am I wrong?
I, I think the stationary plans from the legislature would like to see increased housing. We looked at this as. If we have to add housing, right? It's always a question of where's the right place for density. Um, some things we think this might be, not, not for all of it obviously, but what this has going forward is. If we're gonna have fast bus, tracks, a freeway, it's on the edge of the city.
Regional park.
Regional park.
Even out there.
We're not adjacent to, you know, established neighborhoods. This is going to be probably in West Jordan. This is. Going to be the least impactful.
Line is a good spot for high density.
Right? And they've already got it. They call it daybreak.
I guess, I, I know that you, that is a UTA goal.
It is.
To put more people by their stations, so.
Yes, although they're talking about getting rid of ours.
Well. Oh, are they?
Yeah, that's what you said. This, this was on that style of stations that they were thinking about closing after we said we wanna be more bold and look at something more exciting. They took it off that list.
Okay.
So, but if, if we're leaving it as industrial, then. They might want to close this one down. And, and the reason for it was because they're opening a new one in South Jordan and their head times. Changed with the number of stations they have, so they were.
And then that, the other station's less than a mile away or less than two miles away.
And nobody gets off of that one.
And if they stationary plan that one, you know, the new one.
Any other comments from council?
I don't think so.
The stick next to be a, you have to get off.
Yeah.
You know what you need?
Yeah, I wanna just communicate with me, the mayor and I'm happy to, no one's there that, make sure that we're answering questions, yeah.
We have some south. With council member Bedore's question about contacting.
When he sends out, if he sends out my email.
Respond back to his email, okay?
One, so.
And then copy, eh, can you unplug?
Council member.
While you're down there. And while you're down there, send one for me too.
Um, the mayor said when Taylor sends. If you have questions about it, you can talk directly.
You know that.
And would you like those bi-weekly to go to the council chair and the mayor or to everyone? Alan, how do we want to?
Send it to Alan. We'll make him forward it.
Okay. Process, you feel like you're not hearing the communication you need from me or there's something you wanna change? Please let me know. I wanna make sure that I am being responsive and including you throughout the process.
Well, we have lots of partners. Are we having partners this one? UTA that supplies that.
Uh, UTA, I wanna open the businesses, you know, occasionally partners and. Northern School District still might relocate some of their operation to this area, so they might still be a partner in this location.
That's not really exciting.
Getting it from the city center is, it helps.
Just so you know what you want, exciting. That's not getting exciting.
But UTA, be a partner, you dot the businesses and the location, uh.
Probably can't get.
So, just as a follow. We've got, we've got the, we've got. City center and, and Garden Village one's done. Then to West. And then we've got fifty, and this one will, will get done.
Yeah, four more.
Then we have, is there really four more?
So then we have forty-eight hundred Sugar Factory Road and Jordan Valley Station, so three more.
About twenty-second. Or twenty-seven, as it were.
So we have three, so we have.
I think of this.
We have Sugar Factory, Jordan Valley.
Yeah, but can't even be done with the Sugar Factory.
Not much we can even do.
Sugar Factory one's not.
Jordan Valley, it's not much.
Have to do them, but there's, there is little that can be done because. It's already won't develop.
It's already developed.
Being at Jordan Valley, we need to add, uh, more commercial. Oh, I think that was supposed to be part of the plan actually.
That was funny.
It was UTA that was supposed to add it, right?
No, I can't remember its name.
Jeff Mike.
Light, Light Tech.
Light Tech, that's right.
Never did, you never did finish the market structure.
Um, not done. I'm not seeing any other, uh, any other things on the agenda, so without objection, we'll call this.
The first thing, like my first month on the council's security.